Response and Relief Centers in New York City. We will also be hearing eight bills. Intro 942, sponsored by Councilmember Hanif, would establish minimum standards for emergency congregate housing, including HRCs and respite centers. Intro 943, also sponsored by Councilmember Hanif, would require the asylum seekers, that asylum seekers receive notification of the right to be placed in shelter. Intro 1064, sponsored by Councilmember Bautcher, would require monitoring and evaluating homeless prevention and aftercare programs. Intro 1072, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, would change the housing history requirement for entry into shelter for two years, from two years to one. Intro 1080, sponsored by Councilmember Lee, would require the publication and dissemination of information on emergency feeding programs, food benefit programs, and senior centers. Intro 1084, sponsored by Councilmember Narcisse, would create and require training on trauma-informed care for person-serving refugees, asylees, and migrants. Intro 1095, sponsored by Councilmember Schulman, would require at least one mental health coordinator at any location where refugees, asylees, and migrants receive services from city agencies or providers among their arrival in the city of New York. And finally, Intro 1096, sponsored by Councilmember Stevens, would require Department of Homeless Services to designate eligibility specialists at all shelters. After seeing that much of the Adams Administration’s response to the asylum seeker crisis in New York City did not go far enough, and cast blame on this population for what was already an overburdened shelter system, Speaker Adrian Adams put forth a series of recommendations to the Administration in efforts to proactively provide solutions. Many of those solutions came in the form of bills that we are hearing today. Moreover, the Adams Administration has made it out to be that among only, hold on a second, I’m sorry, I am going blind. You got it, you got it. That among the only ways to address this crisis are to undo the city’s long-established right to shelter. This is extremely short-sighted. Today, I ask that we are, ask why we are even at this point, when there are enough beds for 15,000 people lying empty across the city’s shelter system and in support of housing. I also ask why the Administration is so intent on making life even more difficult for poor New Yorkers, including those seeking permanent housing, with City PEPs vouchers, by trying to undo legislation that we recently passed to open up eligibility for City PEPs. The Council recognizes that one key way to address the influx of asylum seekers in New York City, and to provide them with safe and humane living conditions, is to free up beds in our shelter system, and move people who want to find permanent housing into apartments. Today, we also want to examine the conditions at the HRCs, particularly those with congregate settings, as they are currently not deemed shelter by the Administration, and therefore not subject to many of the protections and standards established by the Callahan Decree that created the right to shelter. I look forward to hearing from the Administration and advocates today, and gathering feedback on the oversight topic and on all of these important bills. At this time, I’d like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here today. Councilmember Hudson, Councilmember Hanif, and I’m sure that we will be joined by several others shortly. I also want to thank our committee’s staff, who worked tirelessly to prepare this hearing and worked very hard to finalize these bills. Amenta Kilowan, Senior Legislative Counsel; David Homero, Legislative Counsel; Julia Harramis, Unit Head; Rosa Martinez, Assistant Deputy Director; and finally, my staff, Elsie Encarnacion, Chief of Staff. I would now like to turn it over to my co-chair, Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, and good morning. I’m Councilmember Shahana Hanif, Chair on the Committee on Immigration. Thank you for joining today’s joint hearing with the Committee on Immigration and the Committee on General Welfare. I’d like to begin by thanking my co-chair, Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, Chair of the Committee on General Welfare, for her support in putting this hearing together. I want to thank my council colleagues, representatives from the Administration, and public for being here with us in the chambers, and to members of the public participating remotely. Our hearing today will address how the city has sheltered newly-arrived New Yorkers seeking asylum. It is undeniable that meeting the shelter needs of the more than 48,000 new arrivals that are currently in the city’s care is an extremely challenging task. In many ways, the Administration has stepped up and deserves praise. It acted quickly to secure the use of over 140 hotels as emergency DHS shelters, while far from perfect, have allowed the shelter system to rapidly scale, while meeting typical shelter standards in large part. The city also launched the Humanitarian Emergency Response and Recovery Center, Relief Centers, or the HRC model, which is run outside of the DHS shelter system by Health and Hospitals and Emergency Management. The six of these centers that are based out of hotels have been largely successful, with standards of living that meet shelter standards and important services incorporated on-site. However, the HRCs where people are housed in congregate settings have proved more concerning. Because these facilities are not classified as DHS shelters, the city has argued that they are not subject to the minimum standards established by the Right to Shelter Consent Decree. In the now-defunct HRCs on Randall’s Island, and in the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal, and the two HRCs currently operating out of converted office spaces in Bushwick, Brooklyn, and Midtown Manhattan, I’ve raised concerns around hundreds of cots being set up head-to-toe in a mass-congregate setting, amongst other conditions that would not be allowed in the DHS shelter system. In May of this year, the city began operating a new classification of emergency housing called “Emergency Respite Centers,” where living conditions are extremely substandard. These include a terminal warehouse at JFK Airport, an NYPD building in Gramercy, and a recently-defunct prison in Harlem. They also include the school gyms that were temporarily used as housing last month but are not currently active. Of the sites that Councilmembers and staff have seen, it’s clear that they are not fit for housing New Yorkers, especially not for extended periods of time. Issues include not having showers on-site, serious plumbing issues that have required complete resident evacuations, and buildings being in general disrepair. While the Administration has stated that these are waiting rooms intended for 24- to 48-hour use, people have been languishing in these facilities for as long as a month now. While resorting to these dire measures, the mayor has adopted counterintuitive policy positions that stand to worsen the city’s homelessness crisis. First, he has opposed the legislative package that the Council recently passed to expand City PEPs vouchers. These bills would make it easier for long-term shelter residents to transition to permanent housing and open up more shelter beds, yet the mayor has not signed them and is considering vetoing them. Further, he even added new work requirements as prerequisites to accessing the vouchers, which will exacerbate the shelter bed shortage. Second, he has undermined the Right to Shelter Consent Decree, which has served as the city’s cornerstone of social service infrastructure for years. Via Executive Order 402, he suspended key Right to Shelter, potentially opening the door for housing families with children in a congregate setting. Additionally, he has attempted to weaken the decree on a permanent basis by filing a court request that, if successful, could remove the city’s obligation to provide shelter to those requesting it. The Right to Shelter Decree is what has prevented New York from experiencing the mass street homelessness that other cities in the United States have struggled with. It must be upheld in full. That’s why I’m proud that today, this Council is hearing two of my bills that would strengthen, not roll back, the right to shelter. I’m grateful to Deputy Speaker Ayala, Public Advocate Williams, and Councilmembers Avila, Sanchez, Caban, Ressler, Gutierrez, Zelarosa, Rivera, and Krishnan for introducing these bills alongside me. I also want to thank Speaker Adams for including these bills in the Council’s White Paper that lays out a comprehensive set of policy recommendations regarding asylum seekers. Intro 942, which is currently sponsored by 19 councilmembers, would establish minimum standards for emergency congregate housing in New York City, including congregate HRCs, respite centers, and any new iterations of emergency housing created in response to asylum seekers coming to our city. These minimum standards would mimic those that are currently in place in DHS shelters via the Right to Shelter Consent Decree, including those around bedspacing, bathrooms, showers, laundry, and meals. This bill will ensure that our newest arrivals are not carved out from the protections that ensure New Yorkers are housed with basic dignity. Intro 943, which is sponsored by 16 councilmembers, would require that the mayor provide written and verbal notification of the right to be placed in a DSS shelter to individuals and families who are housed in specific types of emergency congregate housing in New York City. This notification would stipulate that individuals and families be placed in DSS shelters within 24 hours of their request to be moved to a shelter. The bill would also require that the city report within one calendar day if they were unable to meet this need, this timed request. This will ensure that asylum seekers are not warehoused indefinitely in substandard living conditions that fail to meet the minimum standards of the shelter system. Our hearing today will also address Intros 1064, 1072, 1080, 1084, 1095, and 109, which highlight additional protections and actions for asylum seekers: residents of temporary housing, seniors and recipients of emergency nutrition and food benefits programs. I’m grateful to their sponsors, Councilmember Bautcher, Lee, Hudson, Narcisse, Schulman, and Stevens, some who are also here today, or will be here today, to speak about their bills. We look forward to hearing from the Administration and the public on their response to the hearing’s attached legislation. I want to thank all the committee’s staff for their work on this issue, including J. Sri Gunapathy, Senior Legislative Counsel; Rebecca Barilla, Policy Analyst; Amenta Kilowan, Senior Legislative Counsel; David Romero, Legislative Counsel; Florentine Cabore, Finance Analyst; and Julia Harramis, Finance Unit Head. I also would like to thank my staff, Legislative Director Alex Liao, Communications Director Michael Whitesides, and Chief of Staff Nora Brickner, the sergeants-at-arms, and interpreters working to make this joint hearing run smoothly. Now, I will turn it back to Deputy Speaker Ayala.
Thank you. I want to recognize that we’ve been joined by Councilmember Williams, and with that, we’re going to begin today’s hearing with testimony from the Legal Aid Society.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Cliff, and I’m a staff attorney at the Homeless Rights Project at the Legal Aid Society. I’m testifying on behalf of the Legal Aid Society and the Coalition for the Homeless. Thank you to Deputy Speaker Ayala and Chair Hanif, as well as their staff, for hosting this hearing regarding important legislation to protect the rights of homeless New Yorkers, including recent migrants. As class counsel on the landmark Right to Shelter cases, and the court and city-appointed monitor for the city’s shelter system, Legal Aid and Coalition for the Homeless are uniquely positioned to provide expertise on these issues. At a time when New York City is experiencing record levels of homelessness, the bedrock protections of the right to shelter are more important than ever. While there has been an increase in the number of recent migrants coming to the city from the southern border, the city has created multiple new shelter systems to serve this population, separate from the traditional DHS shelter system. Notably, as was discussed earlier, these new systems, including HRCs and respite centers, are not subject to either state or city rules and regulations that govern the DHS shelter system. Those regulations exist to ensure that people in shelter can meet their basic needs, such as access to showers, a bed with a mattress and a pillow, adequate bathroom stalls for the population size, three meals a day, laundry, lockable storage, and due-process rights to contest a discharge. HRCs and respite centers do not have to meet that basic standard. Clients can be removed at any time, for any reason. Our staff has seen firsthand the harm that results. Clients in respite sites have gone many days without access to a shelter. Many sites have no access to lockable storage to safeguard belongings, including immigration paperwork to preserve asylum claims. Or they may lack access to laundry to wash what little clothing the recent migrants may have. While all city-run facilities must follow federal disability rights laws and honor the civil rights of those in them, we have seen extensive access barriers for recent migrants with disabilities. We have also seen a large number of recent migrants who identify as LGBTQ+, but are placed in a congregate facility where they do not feel safe to be who they are. We strongly support Intro 942, which would ensure that all shelters in New York City, including HRCs and respite centers, have to meet the same basic requirements as the DHS shelter system. Mass homelessness is not a recent phenomenon in New York City, nor is it the result of recent migrants. For decades, New York City has failed to provide sufficient affordable housing, or to focus on moving people out of shelter as quickly as possible. Rather than pursuing modifications to the Callahan Consent Decree, the city should be focusing its efforts on moving people out of shelter into affordable, permanent housing. The more people move out of shelter, the more vacancy there will be in the shelter system, which is a win for everyone. We continue to provide the city with common sense and practical solutions to increase capacity in the DHS shelter system to allow for more space for new arrivals, and we commit to continuing to do so and to working with the Council on these important issues. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much for your testimony today, and thank you for your ongoing support to the Council and to New Yorkers that are struggling every single day. I think that we’ve seen a whole, you know, a lot of, there’s been a lot of conversation this year about changes to rules that, you know, seriously impact the well-being of some of the needy New Yorkers, and that concerns us, and, you know, we really appreciate the Legal Aid stepping up and being, you know, equal partners with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Could you just speak a little bit more about what stripping away the protections that are mandated by our city’s Right to Shelter Decree would mean for New York City, particularly in this moment?
Sure. So, the city has reached out to the court to request to make a motion to modify the Callahan Consent Decree. The Callahan Consent Decree is the decree that guarantees the right to shelter for single homeless men, although this would also extend to single homeless women as well. And so, the city’s request to the court was to modify it such that, at any time, the city could say they had, basically, an emergency and could no longer meet their obligations under the Right to Shelter. Obviously, that would, could result in large numbers of people sleeping outside, even more than already is happening, so it’s very concerning to us and to our clients. We have already gotten calls from clients in shelter, even families with children, calling us very concerned that they are no longer going to be able to stay in shelter.
And has something like this been done in past administrations, in terms of modifications?
There’s certainly been litigation, but every time that the city has tried to modify the consent decree or limit it, it has not, the court has not agreed, and it has only strengthened the protections. I mean, the reason we have a right to shelter is so that we don’t have mass street homelessness. People need a safe place to stay, and that is why Callahan and its progeny are so important, is to keep people off the street and keep people housed.
Thank you so much for testifying.
Thank you. We’ve been joined by Councilmember Narcisse, who will share a little bit with us about her bill.
Good morning. Thank you for being here, and thank you, Chair. My name is Mercedes Narcisse, and I come from a different place, immigrant from Haiti. So, any immigrant’s, you know, situation in the city of New York, I would like to see it the best way we can invite, you know, welcome people in the best way that we can, not only in the city of New York, but I believe United States of America is built with immigrants, so thank you for being here. As our city and the nation continue to struggle and fight, and making sure that, yes, we have been through pandemics, but those are people that are coming in on our shore, and the message that we should continue sending is that the comfort, the Statue of Liberty that we have on our harbor is, we stand by it, and continue to do the best to ensure that people that are coming in feel like, that we’re rejecting them, but welcome them. And everyone that are coming, actually, they’re looking for a dream. No one will be traveling thus far. Some of us come from miles and miles away to be here. And the support of this individual, that journey, surely been full of stress and adversity. I have introduced Intro 1084, which will create the training on the trauma-informed care for person-serving refugee asylum seekers. As we know, they travel miles in really conditions that should not be set for human beings, so they traumatize automatically. So, when they come in, I would like to see that we, as a city of New York, and being a nurse for over three decades, understand little things can get you traumatized. Can you imagine someone that travels so far and overcomes so much to be here, and not only for them, for the children, their family? City Departments of CBOs in consultation with the New York City H&amp;H shall develop training on trauma-informed care. The training shall include, but not be limited to, recognizing signs of trauma exposure, understanding the common behaviors of people exposed to trauma, trauma-informed principle for interacting with those individuals, and resources in addressing secondary trauma. This training shall be substantive and be consistent with standards developed by Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration of the United States Department of Health and Human Services. I hope you will be joining me, all of my colleagues will join me in that support, and you can join me, and to make sure that we provide the best quality healthcare when it comes to mental health and physical health. So, thank you, but this one is for mental health mostly. Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would like now like to turn it over to our council to swear in members of the Administration, if there are any. Thank you.
From the Administration today, we have Jocelyn Carter from Department of Homeless Services, Dr. Ted Long from Health and Hospitals, George Sarkisian from Department of Housing, Preservation and Development, and Commissioner Zach Iskoll from New York City Emergency Management.
You guys pulled one over on me, because I’m not used to you being on this side of the...
Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, members of the New York City Council. I am Zach Iskoll, Commissioner of New York City Emergency Management, and I am here to discuss the surge in asylum seekers in New York City. I am joined today by Administrator Jocelyn Carter from the Department of Homeless Services, George Sarkisian, Chief of Staff and Deputy Commissioner for External Affairs at Department of Housing Preservation and Development, and Dr. Ted Long, New York City’s favorite doctor, Senior Vice President for Ambulatory Care and Population Health at Health and Hospitals. The influx of asylum seekers seeking refuge in New York City continues to be a challenging task and a great example of collaboration among city agencies. As we face this humanitarian crisis, we have not wavered in our commitment to help and support. As you are aware, and as the Administration has said repeatedly, we are in the midst of a crisis. This is an all-hands-on-deck moment, as the system is at a breaking point. This is a national problem, and it requires a national solution. We continue to ask the federal government for a decompression strategy, expedited work authorization, and more funding. The city continues to plan for peak capacity, as hundreds of asylum seekers continue to arrive in New York City every day. As this crisis has continued, and in the absence of support, the city has stepped up and opened emergency sites overseen by a number of agencies, including DHS, Health and Hospitals, HPD, and Emergency Management. New York City Emergency Management helps New Yorkers before, during, and after emergencies through preparedness, education, and response. The agency is responsible for coordinating citywide emergency planning and response for all types and sizes of emergencies. It is staffed by more than 200 dedicated professionals with diverse backgrounds and areas of expertise, including individuals detailed from other city agencies. As a coordinating agency for the city of New York, Emergency Management functions as a general facilitator when it comes to emergency response, ensuring that resources are available for our partner agencies to complete their core competencies, and serving New Yorkers in what can be their worst days with compassion and cultural competency. Emergency Management is no stranger to assisting people displaced from their homes, whether it be a natural disaster like a hurricane flood or other emergencies, such as a fire or gas explosion. We have played a role throughout this crisis by coordinating with partner agencies in the opening of HRCs, coordinating between incoming buses of asylum seekers, and providing support to the operations of the Welcome Center. Most recently, Emergency Management has started to oversee Emergency Respite Centers across the five boroughs. The Emergency Respite Centers provide bed, meals, and security to guests until longer-term accommodation becomes available at a HRC or another location. As the mayor has said, New York City cannot carry this weight on its own. The asylum seeker operation comes at a very high financial cost, and we urge the federal government to provide us with the necessary support as this crisis continues. This unprecedented crisis has been, from the start, a true inter-agency effort, and we will continue to work with our partner agencies, as well as contracted partners and providers, to provide assistance and coordination. We are grateful for the support of those willing to work with us, and that, the many elected officials who know that new immigrants have and will continue to enrich our communities. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. The panel will now take your questions.
Thank you. It’s really a pleasure to see all of you, and I want to start by promising that I really like all of you. So, this is not personal, but I really just, I think, you know, and Councilmember Hanif, you know, is, has worked really hard to ensure that this hearing took place, and I want to really allow her a lot of time to ask whatever questions she may want to ask of the Administration. But I think that, you know, I wanted to start by saying, first of all, thank you, because I understand, and I have been, you know, some people accuse me of being too nice, some people accuse me of being not nice at all. I think, I like to think of myself as somewhere in the middle, and I like to think of myself as somebody that is very fair, and I like to take a really good look at both sides of every issue, because I know that, right, there’s a, there are a lot of nuances to the way that we do things, and it’s very easy to point fingers, and I get that, you know, we, just because, you know, I expect that things are done a certain way, that that’s not always possible. However, I think that we’ve deviated a lot this, you know, this past year. We’ve learned a lot of lessons, and, but I do want to recognize that I have been to several of the sites, and I know, Dr. Long, you know, have the heart of, a heart of gold, and I know that the intentions of all of you on this panel is really to do your jobs as effectively as possible with the tools that you’re being provided. That’s kind of where we get, where the hiccup is, right, is what are those tools that you’re being given, and how, how those tools meet the needs, right, of vulnerable people that are coming into a state that they are very unfamiliar with, that, you know, they don’t know, and ensuring that we’re really meeting the same standards that we expect, right, of our, of New Yorkers that are in need of housing. And so, there’s been a lot of concern about the HRCs, what they mean, what they look like. Again, I’ve been to some I have not been to, or I look forward to, you know, to visiting more of them after the budget is over, and we have a little bit more flexibility. But I do want to recognize that I know how difficult this is, not just for all of you, but also for the Administration, and I think we’ve been very clear about that, and have, you know, really tried to advocate for the same resources that you’re requesting in terms of work visas and additional, you know, funding, because we all want to do the right thing. Having said that, however, as the Chair of General Welfare and as a social services, you know, geared individual, I’m not 100%, you know, sure that I love the idea of having a separate system independent of, you know, DHS. It just, you know, the worry is that, the concern is that we’re not adhering, you know, to policies that have been created throughout the years to address issues, right, that have been brought to the attention of this body. And so, while I, you know, can appreciate your, trying to, you know, ensure that people have a house, you know, a bed to sleep in at night, and a warm meal, we also, our job, right, as oversight, is to ensure that we are getting as close as possible to ensuring those same, the same level of protections, right? So, if I’m coming in and I’m an asylum-seeking family or a single person, I want to know off the back what my rights are, right? I want somebody to explain those to me, and I want to know that I have the right, if I chose to, to go into shelter. And I, and I know that there are limitations there, but, so I guess my first question is, at this point today, how many HRCs have we opened citywide?
So, I can take that, and thank you for your comments, too. I just, I wrote down a couple of things that are really the mantra that we live by as we’re trying to design these sites, to not just be a place to sleep, but to really meet the specific needs of people that have been through a tremendous amount of trauma as they’ve traveled here. And we’ve learned a lot along the way, and I think our model has evolved, as it should, to make sure that we are, again, meeting the specific needs that, meet people where they are, from needing vaccinations to having gone through the journey to arrive here. they are, from needing vaccinations to having gone through the journey to arrive here. To answer your specific question, we currently have 11 HIRCs in operation, and there has been a few HIRCs that have been operated in the past, Brooklyn Cruise Terminal and Randall's Island, that are no longer in operation today.
Okay. And what is the total number of individuals in the 11?
Total number of the individuals in the 11 is 12,593 as of yesterday. Actually, I apologize. Is that, that's, the 12,593 is in the H&amp;H HIRCs, which are 10 of the 11. The HPD HIRC, I have the answer, but I'll let George share it if he would like to.
We have a HIRC at 455 Jefferson Street in Bushwick with 532 asylum seekers.
532?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, so can you explain to me what the differences between a health and hospital HIRC as opposed to an HPD HIRC, and how we arrived at that situation?
Sure. Well, as you could see, we're sitting next to each other today, and we speak a great deal to each other. We've designed the HIRC model, again, as we've incorporated further staff, like social workers for mental health, or like vaccinations as part of the intake process, things like that. The model that we developed, HPD raised their hand to offer to help us so that we could open up more sites more quickly. We only have so many staff, of course. So HPD is using the same model that we've developed and been able to help actually more than 20,000 asylum seekers for, through the H&amp;H HIRCs so far. But HPD raised their hand to offer to help us so that we could help more people more quickly.
But that doesn't mean that health and hospitals is not part of that, that system as well, right?
That, we are deeply, deeply involved, and I'll let George share, but I would describe it as, we've developed a program, they've given us their input, too, and they've implemented the same program. But George, do you want to?
Yeah, one, one, one program, same services in all of our sites, a unified system. We're all working off of the same host system where we're sharing information, transferring people from one site to another site when necessary. So it's completely integrated, and we talk just regularly. So it, it, it functions as one system.
Some of the services, for example, they're true and administered in the same way, is we have social workers, caseworkers, laundry on-site, security for any belongings that people have, 24/7 medical care at both of our sites and at all of the HIRCs. So those same services, we've developed, you know, the model based on what we've seen the specific needs of asylum seekers are, like the fact that many don't know how to interpret their symptoms. So it is helpful to have emergency, but also especially care when people are first coming to our sites, to help them with what they've experienced during their journey, but then also what they've maybe had going on but haven't really been able to address because of the stress of the journey.
And are all of these congregate settings, like, no?
Of our 11 HIRCs, nine are hotels or dorms, and two are settings that are former office buildings that we've turned into congregate settings only for single adult men. That's the Candler, which is one of my sites, and the Jefferson, which is one of HPD's.
Okay. Now, when we, when the idea of the HIRC was initially proposed, it was, it was proposed as a temporary solution while folks were in transition, right, and trying to determine whether they wanted to stay in New York City, whether they wanted to, you know, be re-ticketed. Since then, a lot has changed, and these settings have become a little bit more permanent. Is there, is there, I'm assuming that there's a social worker at each site that's working with individual families to try to figure out what the long-term planning is for that family?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, and we're even having our teams go through, currently, this is just a day in the life, which is literally happening today, to knock on everybody's doors at any HIRC, again, we've talked, we obviously talk to people regularly, but to make another plan moving forward, to see where you are with, with respect to your journey, whether that's speaking with a social worker, a caseworker, or somebody that can help to make a reconnection to that brother in Chicago who you've been trying to reach or maybe you haven't talked to in a while. Whatever it'll take on our side to help you to complete your journey, we want to make sure that we're having that discussion early and often with you to help you. And across the HIRCs, you know, one of the things we've learned is that people's situations are different. So in our HIRCs, I'm proud to say that we've cared for more than 20,000 asylum seekers. Among those, we just shared some of the math, at my HIRCs, the H&amp;H HIRCs, we have a little bit over 12,000 asylum seekers today. That's 8,000 asylum seekers that, through our help, have been able to identify what the next step in their journey is, and we've helped to have them succeed, taking the next step forward. That's about 40% of everybody that has come through our door that we've offered care to, has been able to take the next step in their journey with our help.
Are you getting, are you getting a rotation of folks? Are people coming in that left and then are coming back?
No, that, that's not common.
Okay. So what is the average length of stay per family? Are these families that came in, you know, from, that, you know, as soon as the HIRC opened and are still there, or, you know, have some families left?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, and I, I'll be very upfront with you. I focus more on the discharge percentages because I've spent a lot of time talking to asylum seekers, and everybody's situation is different. For a good, clear example, which actually is a really common one, is we'll have an adult man come into one of our HIRCs, let's say initially, we'll have a discussion, make a plan, and he'll tell us, and this is a common story, "I'm going to be here for about three or four weeks." Why three or four weeks? Because that's the amount of time it's going to take for him to get money back to the rest of his family to have them come up to New York City. And we literally see families get reunited and leave our HIRCs. So, but length of stay can be variable. Some people's families, some people travel with their families, some people's families are closer behind, some it's going to take more time for a variety of reasons. So I think the important thing to me at the end of the day is, if you're trying to bring your family up here, or if you're with your family here, helping to see what it would take for you to take that next step forward in your life with your family, and whether that's on day one, day 10, or day 30, we're there for you. We'll work with you, we'll have a plan with you, and we'll make it happen with you. But we are flexible, given people's individual situations, because, again, people's situations, especially, again, looking at Councilmember Narcisse here, the trauma they've been through, everybody's situation's a little bit different, and we want to be effective in helping you to achieve your goals.
So how many, how many discharges have you had, since that's the number that we're going to focus on?
So, yeah, no, totally. So I'll, I'll share with you the numbers again that are specific to the HIRCs, but then I'll zoom out a little bit and talk about our, our citywide numbers.
Go ahead.
So specifically in the HIRCs, we've been able to care for more than 20,000 asylum seekers. Among those 20,000, 12,000 are with us, over 12,000 are with us in our care today. So, 20,000 minus 12,000 is about 8,000 that we've helped to take that next step in their journey since starting to, since we started to open the HIRCs months ago. That's, again, about 40%. Citywide, and these are, I'm going to share a couple of public numbers now, but just to walk you through. We've been able to care for citywide 78, over 78,700 asylum seekers, so that includes DHS, who I'll turn to see if Administrator Carter wants to add anything in a moment. And among them, we currently have over 48,700 currently in our care. That means that about 30,000 asylum seekers across New York City, we've been able to help and take the next step forward in their journey.
It's a significant number.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a significant number. Oh, we've been joined by Councilmember Ang. Is there a bill of rights that's provided to individuals that are coming in? Could you just walk me through, maybe through, let me, let me kind of backtrack, because this, again, this has been evolving for the last year, so what I remember from two weeks ago may not even be accurate today. So, I'm, a bus, you know, I'm newly arrived, right? I don't even know where the bus is, is going anymore because it's not, it may not even be going to, it was Grand Central Station, right?
Penn, or I'm sorry, Port Authority.
Port Authority. So are the, are the buses still coming to the, through the Port Authority, or are they going, being redirected?
So the buses, actually, that's a great question. So I can walk you through a little bit of a, of the life, starting with if you're coming on it from a bus, or if you're coming through other modes of transit, which I'll note is how most asylum seekers are coming into New York City today. If you're coming through a bus, you'll typically get on the bus in Texas. It's a chartered bus, meaning we know when you're going to arrive at Port Authority. We have that information ahead of time. Zach, Commissioner Iskoll's team is there, awaiting the bus, arranges for people to get off the bus, and then transported via another bus over to our new arrival center. That's true for anybody coming from any chartered bus from Texas. We are noticing that a lot of people are coming through planes, trains, automobiles, you name it nowadays. So the single point of entry for anybody, any asylum seeker coming into New York City, we've made our arrival center. So you may get off of a plane and come to the arrival center, you may be coming from a bus from Texas, and then Zach's team will get you over to the arrival center. But either way, you come through the same doorway at the same arrival center, and you'll have the same experience there moving forward.
Where's the arrival center?
It's at the Roosevelt Hotel.
Okay.
So then when you come through the front door of the arrival center, we do have a pretty regimented process where you check in. Our staff will actually walk you up to the main waiting area in the lobby. First thing we do, which has been true, drawing from, you know, what meant the most to people at our, our HIRCs over the last six, eight months of experience, is we're going to offer you food, water, and a bathroom first. Again, as Councilmember Narcisse said, you've come a long way, and food can go a long way, too. So we make sure that you're comfortable, then we register you. And the registration is a pretty quick thing, but we give you a wristband that just says you're, we know that you're onsite so that we can know who's onsite at any given time, so that we want to make sure that we have all of our operations very smooth. In terms of the number of people that have gotten that far in the process since we opened the arrival center, over 13,000 asylum seekers have registered, meaning come to the arrival center and gone through our process since we opened it just a little bit over a month ago. Then, once you've registered, you go into really the heart of the operation. First thing that will happen to you is we'll go through a medical screening process. Again, a lot's happened to you, including you could have caught communicable diseases along the way. So we screen for active tuberculosis, we do a screen for COVID, and we actually do a total skin exam as well, because we've seen a lot of communicable diseases like varicella because people coming from a lot of countries in South America have not been exposed to things like chickenpox, which are routine here, but are not as common there. Then we talk to you about if there are any critical medical issues for you that you may have been, you know, biding your time to really address. So we've seen some, some actually really sad cases, you know, this wasn't at the arrival center, this is at Port Authority, but we've seen, you know, a child had a witnessed seizure, we even had a mother that gave birth, and we've had a variety of other chronic diseases. But the, the silver lining there is we're able to immediately intervene, and we have medical teams, again, there 24/7, so whatever we see, we're able to help you right away. We bring you up to a private room on the second floor, we'll address your medical issues before you take the next step forward in your process. Then we go through, and this is really part of the concept behind the arrival center, is people have been coming into New York City, again, in a variety of different ways, coming to a variety of different places, and you, Councilmember, I all have seen some of the different places, but we wanted to have the same intake for everybody. So asking everybody the same questions, getting to know everybody in the same way, being able to make plans with everybody in the same fashion as well. And part of the concept, which has been proven true in the last month for us, is we've learned that for a lot of people coming in, they may come to one of our sites, but they may actually know where they're trying to go next, what the next step of their journey would be, but they just can't do it on day, within a few hours. So we have a set of rooms set aside based on experience that, that we've had, and that also, you know, the DHS has had through their centuries of experience. And we let people stay the night. So if what it's going to take is to help you to complete your journey to find your brother in Chicago, that's a true story, by the way, you can stay the night with us, and then we'll pick up the conversation again with you tomorrow, get you a ticket if that's what your choice is, communicate with your brother in Chicago with you, and get you on your way to Chicago. So in the arrival center, we have, we offer that same opportunity with the same discussion to everybody coming in, and then we also get a line of sight into what part of the process people are in as well, with respect to their seeking asylum in the U.S., and then I know I'm very, being very verbose, and then we will get you to where we decide together the next place for you is. Oh, sorry, last thing, though. As part of this process, too, while you're waiting to have the conversation with us, a really effective thing that we've done is we have roving vaccine teams. So we have vaccine teams that will go around to children and adults just while you're waiting, just like Administrator Carter here is. We would just go up and say, "Would you like to be vaccinated? Have you been vaccinated for common things like MMR, varicella?" We too often hear the answer is no, but we're able to fix it right then and there. And my teams alone, in our HIRCs, Arrival Center and Navigation Center, have now surpassed more than 20,000 vaccines administered to asylum seekers.
I, I had heard of a couple of incidents in my district of chickenpox outbreaks at the schools, so that's, that's, that's good to hear. But at the arrival center, is that where you make the determination who goes to DHS and who goes to HIRCs and who goes to HPD?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And how is that determination made? Based, is that, is that based on preference from the individual, or is that at the recommendation of the staff?
So it's based on a couple of things. One is availability. So if you're, for example, a family with children, the most convenient option for you, I believe, would be for you to stay at the Roosevelt Hotel, which has rooms only for families with children who will be staying there moving forward. So if you're a family with children, we offer you a room at the Roosevelt if we have one. The challenge is, while our effectiveness and compassion has been infinite throughout this crisis, our space in the Roosevelt Hotel and across New York City just is not. So we run out of space regularly when we open rooms. We, we fill them with families with children at the Roosevelt. So then we look at our other HIRCs if we have availability, or that's when, if you're a family with children, we touch base with our DHS colleagues who are onsite 24/7 at the arrival center as well, and find the best option for you if you're a family with children. If you're an adult, it's a different scenario. You aren't going to any of the hotels that are exclusive for families with children. But we go down to see where there's availability within our city system, and that would include our, our respite sites as well.
Okay. All right. I have a million other questions, but I want to be fair here. I could be here all day, because it's, no, it's, you know, again, because it's, it's changing so rapidly that it's almost impossible, even from us, from the outside looking in, trying to kind of decipher what's what, you know, on a given day. But I, I did ask a question, I don't know, so is there some sort of, or can, is there the ability, I know that some of the bills speak to this, about providing some sort of bill of rights that ensure, you know, in the appropriate language, that folks understand, right, that they're, they're in a HIRC and they decide that they want to transition over to a shelter, that they can do that freely?
Currently in the arrival center and the HIRCs, and then I'll turn to my colleagues here if there's anything they want to add on this, we do know your rights in multiple languages, which I'd be happy to share with you after the hearing today, and if you have feedback on that, you know, we'd welcome that as well. I don't know if there's anything Administrator Carter or Chief of Staff Sarkisian, you want to?
I'm happy to just, just make one comment, Councilmember. When your opening remarks, you mentioned about having sides in this, and I just want to sort of emphasize that the priority of all of us at the city is the health and safety of the individuals in our care. I don't think there's any sides when it comes to that. In terms of the bill, a bill of rights, and I know that throughout this process and throughout this unprecedented emergency over the last year, there's been a lot of talk about bills of rights, about right to shelter, about putting people into DHS system. I can't make this any more clear. We're out of space, right? And so we need a flexibility to be able to respond, to be able to prioritize people with special needs, families with children. I wish we lived in a world where we could provide for everybody within the standards of Callahan or otherwise. That's not the nature of this emergency. That's not where we are today. And I think that's sort of an important point, but I do also just want to reemphasize that our number one priority is the health and safety of the individuals in our care, and we are doing, and I think actions speak a lot better than words, I think the actions of the city have consistently demonstrated that commitment over the past year.
Yeah, I, I think that where we, and I, I agree with most of what, what you're saying. However, I, you know, obviously it's not our intention to have, you know, a division, right, between both sides of City Hall on this matter. This is so important, right? We should be working together. We should be, you know, use, many of us have experienced, you know, on this matter, like, you know, Shawana wants to be helpful, I want to be helpful, members of the committee want to be helpful. We just haven't been allowed to be a part of the conversation. And because we haven't been allowed to be a part of the conversation, then we have to use our oversight abilities to be able to get the information that we need and to provide whatever feedback we may have. And, and so, you know, we, we really are not, like, I know that I, you know, I can speak for myself, again, being a fair person and having, and seeing the, the situation, I understand that we have a capacity issue. That is, that, you know, that is crystal clear. However, saying to an individual, "Hey, you know, Mr., you know, Ms. Smith, you are entitled, right, if you would like to transfer to a DHS site, unfortunately, at the moment, there's just not any capacity, so this is the option that we're going with today, and this is why. If that should change in the future, right, we can, we can take your information and we can make that accommodation at a later time." But that, 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 that level of transparency is what we are concerned about, right? Because if, if a person doesn't know and they're just, you know, being sent from one location to another location, they're gonna, right, people are gonna, they'll need a place to stay, so they're gonna, so that, that, that level of transparency is what we're looking for, right, is saying that. But I, but I do get it, and I think most of us understand that we have a serious capacity issue, and we're not trying in any way to impose or make it more difficult for you to be able to do your job, because I honestly don't know how you do it every day. And I get calls, you know, like, like, you know, from Ali and, you know, from other folks sometimes, and they're like, "Hey, you know, like, we ran out of space, like, do you have any, you know, any recommendations?" And at that point, you know, we're able to thankfully come up with a couple of And at that point, you know, we're able to thankfully come up with a couple of strategies that may be helpful. But that's really the extent of the communication. And, and I think that it should go beyond that, right? Because we're not trying to be obstructionist, you know, in the least. And I, again, have a huge, you know, amount of respect for the work that you have done. But our responsibility is to make sure that families are informed and that they know, you know, that they have options at some point. Limited as they may be, they still have a right to know. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my co-chair, Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you so much, Deputy Speaker Ayala.
I'm sorry, could you, I didn't acknowledge Councilmember Stevens, who's giving me the side eye.
I want to just want to acknowledge.
I want the record to reflect that she gave me the side eye.
That we are, we are joined by Councilmember Elteia Stevens. Thank you so much to the administration for being here. And like Deputy Speaker Ayala, I want to just emphasize, like, this is us playing our part in ensuring that we are asking for more transparency where there hasn't been or getting the clarification that we need to continue serving and working together. And so I, too, don't want to come or come off as being combative or playing a role that is in some fantasy world. I acknowledge for the, from the time I started my term, that we have been welcoming asylum seekers. And that is the city's current reality. It has shifted the way in which we address every single issue. And all of the council members are deeply committed to continuing to welcome asylum seekers and working with the administration to ensure that we get the adequate legal services, housing, ensuring that the students have adequate food and bilingual educators and guidance counselors. All of the, all of the facets of their life is absolutely meaningful to the way in which this council has shifted and how we are working. And so I just want to begin with, with that because really this is the investigative part that we are, we are responsible for. So I want to ask a little bit more about the respite centers. Could you share how many respite centers there are at the moment and how many people are in these respite centers?
So we're currently operating about 11 respite centers. Two, we are currently shutting down. One, we're in the process of opening across the five boroughs. We have approximately 3,000 on any given day people in the respite centers.
And the respite centers, how are they different from the Herx?
So the respite centers are supposed to be really just temporary facilities. And so what we did is, you know, and this goes back to Councilmember Ayala's question about HPD versus health and hospitals and the difference between different systems. One of the things that we've done sort of collectively as a city is really focus on agencies' sort of core competencies. Right? Health and hospitals, HPD, they both have a core competency of providing shelter. And so they are running the Herx, which is sort of more robust places where we can host people for a longer period of time. One of our core competencies is coastal storm shelters, right? If we have a coastal storm coming, we put people in shelters. We adopted that model, which really is only for housing people 48 to 72 hours, to be able to provide an overflow room for people to stay while we wait for capacity to open up in other systems around the city.
And how are the respite centers sited? What are the qualifications for?
So, I mean, I will tell you, we have now looked as, as a city at close to 1,000 spaces across the city. Essentially, there are a number of variables that we look at. But at the end of the day, it is really about what's the infrastructure in place? What are the transportation needs? How many, what's the capacity to house people there? What are the terms of the lease? There's a number of variables that go into it. And I think when you look at sort of the diversity of types of facilities we're using, you can see what we have to do to make this work at this stage.
Absolutely. And of the respite centers that council members and staff have seen or heard reports from, we have heard countless reports of these places being, like, not suited for housing or for shelter and especially not for extended periods of time. Could you describe, like, if there's a cutoff period for when you are moving people out? Or what is the maximum and minimum stay at the respite?
Yeah, this is an unprecedented emergency. There's no maximum amount of time. It's when space becomes available at other places. What I will say is sometimes one of the things that we are seeing at some of these sites is we will canvas to provide options for people to go to other places. And sometimes people don't want to move because of other issues, right? They've gotten to know the community, the neighborhood, they have a job in the, in the neighborhood. And so those are sort of other things that we need to consider. We'll also say, in relation to both your and Councilmember Ayala's comments about oversight, I just want to make clear that we really welcome the oversight. You know, we welcome the conversation. I personally invited legal aid to tour these facilities because I wanted their feedback of how we can do better at these places. There are some things that they identified that were low-hanging fruit that we could identify to provide greater health and safety for the people in our care. We had folks from Department of Health come through, hygienist sanitarians, who could provide some feedback on making the environment more healthy. But this is something that we're literally building these and increasing the capacity for more longer duration stays out of the necessity until there's other places for people to go.
Sure, totally understand the conditions and wanting to place everybody in, in some facility so that they have a place to sleep. Could you share if there are services onsite at the respite centers or are folks told to go to the Navigation Center or the Welcome Center for those services?
So they, most folks go to the Navigation Center or the Welcome Center for services. We do have some services that are onsite. We have nurse practitioners that are onsite. We have mental health providers that stop by the sites. But the more robust services that are provided at a Herx are not provided at these respite centers.
Understood. And then are school gyms still being considered as locations for respite centers?
The intention is not to use school gyms. Everything is on the table. The school gyms that we did use, we needed an immediate place that we could open up very quickly for 24/48 hours while we waited to sign another lease to move people into. Could that happen in the future? I hope not. But as we have said repeatedly, everything needs to be on the table with this unprecedented emergency.
And then in, in the, in the school gyms or other respite center locations, could you describe what the bathroom and shower situation entails?
So every site is different. Every site has bathrooms. Every site varies in terms of the number of bathrooms per individual. Every site now has some sort of shower solution, whether it's onsite or they need to go to a parks facility or a Herx in order to get a shower. But these are all things that we have to solve for as we are building these things and housing them at the same time.
And then in identifying the respite centers, are you working with the local electeds? Or how are the decisions getting made about this center here or this vacant building here will be a respite?
I mean, the decisions are being made around us not wanting people to sleep on the street. And so, I mean, we've literally had a situation where we were so pressed for room, we started lease negotiations at 4:00 P.M. We finished lease negotiations at, what, 10:30? We were moving people in by midnight and then continued to build out infrastructure for longer duration stays with people staying in those facilities. And that has become sort of normal at the pace that we're doing this, simply because of how unprecedented this crisis is and just the need and our concern, primary concern of making sure people are not sleeping on the street.
Absolutely. And which ones are shutting down?
So there are two hotels that we are in the process of closing. The leases run out June 30th. And so those are the two that we're closing.
How long are the lease agreements?
It varies per site. We aim for at least 30 days with extensions. Some are as long as, I think into, I think the longest, I'd have to get back to you on the specifics for each site, but I could do that.
So then when the respite centers close, or the two that are closing, is it with everybody already having?
No, we're in the process of moving people out into other facilities. Those are non-congregate shelters where we had, or respite centers, excuse me, where we had families with children, some folks with special needs, that we are identifying the places where they're going to go next.
And how frequently are respite centers shutting down? Because it seems like moving people out, okay.
They're not. I mean, it's based on the lease agreement. And, and in this case, the agreement with the hotels, which was brokered by the Red Cross, sunsets on June 30th.
And how long was that lease? Was that a one month?
I don't remember. George, do you remember when we, two months?
It was about a two-month lease.
About two months.
And then has there been a push to increase, like, ensure that the lease doesn't just end on June 30th? And is?
We should be able to get everybody out before then.
Okay.
I think we're very close to accomplishing that this week.
Got it. And then I know you mentioned that bathrooms and showers vary site to site. Are there any facilities that don't have showers onsite? And which ones are those that have, that basically designate showers?
There are sites that do not have showers onsite, but there is a shower solution for all sites at this time.
And is?
Meaning that people can go to a shower off-site. They can take a shower off-site at a nearby location, whether it's a park facility, a hotel.
Which ones, which respite centers are those?
I could, I could circle back with you and give you a list of which ones. You want to know which ones have them onsite versus not onsite?
Don't have them onsite. Yeah, I mean, we'd love to know both, but for the moment right now, could you share the respite centers that don't have a shower onsite?
So some of them have, I mean, I don't want to make this more complicated. Some of them might have a shower onsite or a shower solution onsite, but not ideal. So we also have a facility off-site. I think that there's probably, looking at the list, I think of all of the sites, three of the ones that are currently being operated do not have an ideal shower solution onsite.
And then, so they don't have an ideal, meaning?
Meaning they might have, they might have a couple of showers that, you know, are, can be used, but it's better for people to go to the park facility or a hotel.
And in those respite centers, how many people are there?
A few hundred.
Like 500 versus 100? I mean, it's concerning and, you know, you're looking at a paper.
I share your concerns, but again, people are able to get.
I don't want to debate this. I just like find it, you know, we've got some bills that would regulate and really address the issue around dignity. And I understand the scale of how many people the city is serving. And I appreciate that, we, New Yorkers appreciate that and we see it. But for folks needing to have to step out of a facility, to go to another facility, and I do want to ask, like, how far is this park site? Or how far are people going, particularly if these are folks with families to take a shower?
With all due respect, I wish that there was a piece of legislation that could be waved like a magic wand to magically create the capacity in the city for us to open up respite centers, shelters, Herx or otherwise, with everything that we, that is needed at that moment. That is not where we are today. I wish that I had plenty of spaces, I wish that I had plenty of spaces with showers onsite that could do this. The alternative.
We're going to continue to push on that.
The alternative is people sleeping on the streets.
And we don't want that.
That's the alternative.
Yeah, and we've had to be in a battle right now.
And so the team has done a remarkable job of identifying other solutions nearby to make sure that people have showers and otherwise.
No one is saying you haven't done that. We are simply just wanting to know a little bit more about what are the existing services onsite.
Right, but I do think it's also important to note that a piece of legislation will not solve that problem.
And, you know, in your remarks, you haven't talked about how you look at the legislation. So it would be good right now to get a clear understanding of the positions, particularly around 942 and 943. And on any of the others, if the administration has taken a position yet?
Yeah, I mean, on 942, I think it's performatory at best. I think it's dangerous at worst. You know, our number one priority during an emergency, any type of emergency sheltering operation, is the health and safety of those in our care. And as I said, I wish we could wave some legislative magic wand to generate three feet of space between cots to make sure that we have, you know, 15 showers and 10 toilets for every individual. But that's not the nature of emergencies. We have to operate in the real world. And this threatens to remove the flexibility we need to respond. It could also impact the willingness of critical partners like the Red Cross to partner with us in opening up congregate facilities. I think also it's important to note state law does grant the mayor the power to take a range of broad actions, including suspension of local laws in emergency. I think bills that invite suspension should not be passed. Rather, I think the council should work with the admin to discuss the best ways to respond to these emergencies and make sure that we are doing everything in our power to serve people in places that meet their basic health and safety needs. On 943, you know, I would defer to DHS, but I will say that DHS makes every possible effort to provide shelter to eligible families and adults, as is required by the state regulator. I think this bill is also at odds with the reality of where we are. Passage will not change the fact that our shelters are full or the simple fact that beds are not available. This bill would also likely be subject to suspension in an emergency. And I think it would impact the flexibility we need to prioritize, in particular, families with children, people with special needs, disabilities, or otherwise. But one thing that I do want to add to that is, you know, I think the spirit of what you're trying to do, as I said earlier, actions speak louder than words. And when I see the work that not only Emergency Management, but our sister agencies and the city workers have done, I mean, we had a, we put out a call to city volunteers to work at these sites. In the first 72 hours, we had 5,000 city workers volunteer to work in these respite centers. And I will tell you, this is very hard work. Multiple languages being spoken, 12-hour shifts overnight, serving needs of a population that really needs our love and our support. I think the city is doing everything it can to meet the spirit of what you're trying to do, but I don't think this legislation really helps.
Thank you for the feedback. I respectfully disagree. And similarly, want to lift up all of the city workers and all of the ways in which New Yorkers have stepped up. I mean, we're seeing it in our district with mutual aid workers and all sorts of arts organizations and folks across experience just stepping up to support those in the DHS shelters that have been cited, at least in my district, as emergency shelters. And that is remarkable. It speaks to the strength of New Yorkers. And the strength of this city is one that is built on deep roots as a sanctuary city. And, and it is with that premise that these two bills come from. I mean, I don't find, I, I, I understand the emphasis on health and safety, but when you say that there are folks needing to go outside for a better shower, that feels antithetical to health and safety. So it feels contradictory that on one hand, we're saying, here's, here's what we're doing to ensure health and safety. Meanwhile, there are facilities that have shower solutions, which I don't know what that means. Would love just an explanation of what a shower solution also means just for, to be stated on the record here.
A shower solution means that there is a place nearby within a few-minute walk or there's transportation available to a shower facility where they can go and take a shower. That's what a shower solution means. I would also, though, I would say, you know, I want to give you sort of just one example. You know, in the last week and a half, we've had three really tragic fires that I've gone to in the middle of the night worried that we would not be able to provide shelter to the residents who were vacated from these buildings, largely because the Red Cross does not have a lot of hotel room availability because of the number of people that we are now housing at all of the different sites around the city. And in some of these cases, we've had to consider opening up congregate shelters for folks. So a bill like this would require? So, a bill like this would require that I look for a location where I can have 15 showers per individual, 10 bathrooms per individual, and three feet of space from a cot. Do you want me using that facility a mile and a half away? Or a gym that is much closer, that maybe those cots are going to be a foot away, maybe the bathroom in the shower facility is not ideal? But in these real-world emergencies, we need the flexibility to be able to make these decisions to best serve the folks. And what I just want to emphasize is that we will always make those decisions with the best interest, based on the resources and capacity and what we can do, actually accomplish. But this bill makes it more challenging for us to operate in an emergency and actually serve New Yorkers.
Well, right now, with folks living in varied conditions, really raises concerns. And it's based on those concerns that we are trying to identify policy solutions.
And again, these are very temporary facilities where people are not, these are not long-term shelters, so I want to be clear about that.
I hope not. I mean, some people have been languishing.
This is not long-term housing. This is not a permanent solution for folks.
In respite centers.
This is a short-term waiting room while we wait to put people into more long-term places with DHS, Health and Hospitals, and HPD.
I hope so. I mean, I think we are seeing that while the administration has shared that these are short-term facilities, that there are people who are languishing for days on end. And we have put out legislation to really ease the shelter system and allow folks to be able to transition out, and that is being debated with us. And so, while we have offered solutions that would really support folks moving out of the shelter system, to ease out the shelter facilities, to welcome new families or individuals, that is now being debated with. And so, recognize your feedback, but I think pulling away or eroding our city's foundation of the right-to-shelter decree can have egregious, egregious consequences that I know this council will fight back against, fight back against on any effort to erode the, the consent decree. I'd like to pass it back to Deputy Speaker for questions or my colleagues.
Yeah, we lost a few colleagues. Oh, actually, Councilmember Narcisse had a question.
Thank you. Thank you again. And Deputy, I mean, Chair, both Chairs, thank you. This is very important hearing, and that's the reason I stay here. And I do understand you now. I was listening to what you were saying. You need flexibility. And in emergency, yes, we do need flexibility, but at the same time, we're trying to create, like I was saying before, a structure. You know what? You have Dr. Long with you in that panel, which I love so much. Guys, I love you. But that's my colleagues in medical, and I love when people put their heart and soul in their work and want to do the best. But at the same token, I heard my colleague said, that's our job too, to making sure that there is structure, that people cannot do anything they want to do. We're all trying, it's just like a check and balance. That's the way it is. We're trying to put legislation in place so where people, when they welcome, when they come to New York City, they feel like they're welcome. But in case of emergency, we have, maybe that's something, you gave me something to kind of process, but at the same time, we have to make sure people are treated fairly. Like, for somebody to travel, how many miles that we want that person to travel to take a shower? How many feet away? Yes, we want to, for you to have the flexibility. We understand that. No one expected 78,000, more than 78,000 people to hit us in New York City at once. But like you said, yes, we need a place to put them. But we want to make sure that we create, we do the best we can at all times. And our job as a council members is to put legislation in place. And then, I understand, I respect your work. I know that is, can be very stressful. I, I mean, I've been there, done it. Working in the ER, trust me, working different places, running business, it's, it's hard. Life is hard. But at the same token, those folks are coming from miles away, looking for that dream, and we have to make that dream as, as less painful as possible before they hit their way. There's some hard things I want to get to. When the women come for their full assessment, I know something that probably you deny, you're not going to expect from me to ask. What I have heard throughout the process, those women have been raped along the way. So, how many women thus far that you find? What's the percentage that have actually been raped along the way while they're coming to our, to New York City?
Well, I, unfortunately, I, I am familiar with this. This is one of the most devastating things. Nobody could forget, once they start to hear some stories about what people have been through, including women that have been raped. And so, our job here in New York City is to do the best we can to offer them immediate help. What happens at the Arrival Center now, so I'll sort of walk you through. I'll say, as I walk through the process that we've set up, though, I don't have the percentage of women that have been raped on the journey in our data here, but I can look into and see what I'm able to find in our data, and I'd be happy to circle back on that. I could show you what the process is in terms of how we help people, though.
Yeah.
So, when anybody comes through the Arrival Center, we acknowledge that a variety of sources of trauma can happen to you along the journey. So, we set up a few things, I didn't mention a couple of them, at the Arrival Center that we do at the outset. One is the PHQ screen, and another is an evaluation, again, with questions as part of your intake process. The PHQ, which I know Councilmember Narcisse is very familiar with, but just for everybody, is the general screener for depression. So, what we've done is, again, with Health and Hospitals involved, I did the simplest thing I could. I set up the same system I have in my clinic in Morrisania, where I see my patients in the Bronx every Friday. Everybody does the PHQ, 12 and above, that's how it was, how it's standardized. And if you screen high on the PHQ, then you immediately, without, just in a matter of minutes, will be talking to one of our social workers that's onsite. So, we're not having you screen and then scheduling you an appointment a few weeks out. If you need help, and we know who needs help based on what your score on the PHQ for depression, for example, we offer you that help immediately. Then we'll plug you into longitudinal care, and we have, again, sites in our system that we can utilize, like Roberto Clemente, and sites that, for example, that site, 100% of my staff are bilingual, speak Spanish. But, you know, from when you come into the door, we do understand, because we've heard too many times about the horrors and the, really the hell people have been through to get here. That's why, on day one, we weren't doing the PHQ for everybody, but day, whatever this is, we certainly are now, because we've, we've heard so many of the stories that you've also heard, that we need to do everything in our power to help people. And we have an opportunity in New York, in New York City to do things differently than anything people have experienced prior to getting here. So, from the PHQ to plugging you into longitudinal care, to giving you the ability to share your story with our social workers, to then bridging that to, you know, what you experienced at one of our sites, those are all things that we've learned are important, based on what people have told us, and that's why we built out the system we have.
So, do you refer them to, like, for those that living the hurt? Do you refer them to CBOs, where they're going to be? Do you kind of, because that's a lot for women to be traumatized that way, not only taking the path, but being raped along the way. Some of them end up pregnant, and that's kind of hard for me. So, do they get that support along the way? Do we keep up with them?
So, putting my...
I know we're supposed to keep up with everyone, sorry.
No, no, no.
But those particular population is hard, because I have talked to a few, and for me, as a woman listening, it's just...
I can't imagine how hard it is. So, I'm, from putting my doctor hat on for a moment, there's two sort of things that we do to make sure that we're supporting people. You mentioned at our HIRCs, so I'll just give the specific example of what materially happens at the HIRCs. So, if you're a woman as part of a family or a single adult woman that's coming to one of our HIRCs, we train all of our staff in mental health first aid, so that the first thing is, we want to make sure that we don't have just one set of eyes on people who could be going into crisis, because you're processing what you've experienced as you arrive. You're going to continue processing that for days, weeks, months, maybe years.
Years.
Beyond, exactly right. So, we want to make sure that all of our staff are, are eyes on people who could be going into crisis. So, that's why we do that training for all of our staff. But we don't just do that. We even have, for example, our Survivors of Torture program at Bellevue and our Libertas Clinic, which does a similar function at Elmer's Hospital. They're helping to train our staff as well. So, we want to make sure that our staff, again, have the right set of eyes, looking for the right things. But that's only a piece of it. The second piece, which I wanted to really emphasize, which I know is where you're going here, is that we can only do so much onsite, only have so much staff, people are only with us for so much time. But we need to set people up for the care that they need for, and to use your words, because you're right about this, for the years to come. That's where it comes into play, that with, you know, with Health and Hospitals doing this, we have the ability and a lot of experience in how to most effectively set people up with not only primary care, to look after their physical issues, but with the right mental health care at the right time, meeting them where they are. I gave the example, which I'm proud of, again, we have clinics, I don't know how many clinics are like this around in New York City or the country, but Roberto Clemente, I'm very proud of. We've set up a special referral network to them. 100% of our staff there speak Spanish, from the front desk clerk to any of the clinicians you're going to see. That's where people can get world-class care in New York City. And again, I view our job as figuring out how to get people into the right care at the right time for them. And we are trying our very best, leveraging all of the resources of the 40,000-plus employees at New York City Health and Hospitals, to address the hell the people have been through that are the stories you've been hearing.
Thank you. I went over my time. I have other questions, but thank you so much. Continue doing the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for HPD. Oh, we've been, oh, sorry. We've been joined by Councilmember Chiose online. I'm sorry. Bear with me, okay. All right. So, I have some questions regarding the out-of-state, well, out of New York City County placement. So, can you tell us at which specific locations where the asylum seekers and migrants will volunteer to transfer to upstate locations housed?
Sure. So, we're, we're talking to and recruiting folks from a couple of locations. We're recruiting folks from the Arrival Center. When they get there, we're talking to them about the upstate option. And we're actually recruiting a lot of our folks from the respite center, respite centers. So, you know, that's kind of like fertile ground for these conversations. You know, we're talking to folks about upstate hotels that have private rooms, private bathrooms, private showers, and that's one of our solutions to kind of decompress the city. You know, what Commissioner Isco was talking about was all the pressure that's kind of built up in the city, and you see that at the respite centers, you know? So, the upstate program is a way to kind of relieve some of that pressure and move some of those folks out of the respite centers more quickly.
How many upstate sites do we have currently operational?
We have 10 hotels upstate.
And which counties?
So, our hotels are in a few counties. So, we have hotels in Albany, two hotels in Westchester County, one in White Plains, one in Ardsley. We have, we have two hotels in Newburgh, and we're just opening up hotels just outside of Buffalo and Chictowaga. And one in Poughkeepsie, pardon me.
Okay. Can you tell us what information asylum seekers receive before volunteering to go upstate?
Sure. We, we give them two bits of information. First, we tell them about the actual program and services they're going to receive. The services they receive upstate are the exact same services our HIRCs are providing here in the city. So, they're getting shelter, they're getting food, three meals a day plus snacks, they're getting access to healthcare, social workers, caseworkers, and laundry service. Also, while they're up there, we have a shuttle that kind of takes them around those cities and essentially gives them access to kind of key employment centers, commercial centers in these places. The hotels might not be in downtown Albany, but we want to give them access to downtown Albany. So, we tell them about kind of the, the transportation they'll have access to. And the second thing we tell them is a little bit about the places they're going. If you're coming from Venezuela, you don't know much about Albany, you know, and they need to know what they're getting into. So, we'll tell them about Albany, how many people live there, it's our capital, show them a couple of pictures, give them a sense of where the hotel is actually located in, in relation to downtown Albany, and make sure they know, A, the services, and B, the place they're going.
Okay. And they have the option to come back if they choose to?
Yeah. So, our goal when we're, we're taking folks up there is to help them integrate into these places. So, we're building relationships with CBOs, faith-based organizations, political leadership, and the goal is to actually help them integrate. Like Dr. Long was saying, you know, we, we want this to be kind of a step in, in their process of kind of integrating in this country, and we're trying to give them a platform to do that. But they're free to go and come as they choose, you know, they, they have status here.
Okay. And how do they travel? Is that by, do they have shuttles?
Yeah. Well, sorry, within the city?
How do they travel around, how do they get around Albany? I mean, Albany's...
Sure, yeah, yeah. We, we provide a shuttle. That's part of the service that we provide, that takes them from the hotel to downtown Albany, to the grocery store and a couple of other key locations.
Okay. I felt like there was another question I wanted to ask you, George. I know that there was a, there was a lawsuit in some counties. Have those resolved themselves?
Several lawsuits. And they're still ongoing. Probably best to ask the Law Department about their current status.
Okay. Okay. I mean, yeah, my, my concern about the out-of-state, you know, accommodations is really that a lot of, you know, I mean, I've been to Newburgh, you can't go to the store without having a car.
Totally.
It's just, you know, nobody's outside, because nobody wants to run into, you know, little furry friends outside, that they don't tell you that. So, everybody's stuck in the house, and you're wandering around, and there's no people.
Yeah.
And so, you know, very isolating.
Yeah, we, we, we know that's an issue, and actually, we're, we're being very selective about the hotel sites we choose, you know? We don't want them to be in the middle of nowhere. We want folks to envision their lives in these places, that they can go there, live there, get an apartment, get a job, and kind of integrate into these communities. And when there's a gap, like a physical gap between the hotel, which might be on the side of a highway in downtown Albany or downtown Buffalo, we're providing shuttle service so folks can make that...
And who's coordinating all of this?
So, we, we've contracted out to a company named Doc Go, that's doing a lot of the other HIRCs down here in the city, who have a lot of experience in providing this type of kind of very nimble, operational kind of service, where they're right now focused on kind of like providing medical care, essentially, you know? They're, they provide medical care to, like, folks in the city, you know, they were the folks that set up all those, like, booths on the side of your street to get your COVID tests, right? So, they're kind of like, they, they have medical care that they provide, and they're very nimble in how they kind of staff up and hire up and really focus on operations. So, we hired Doc Go, and they're essentially going to these places, staffing up, providing all the services, providing the medical care, and doing all the work they're kind of used to doing down here in the city.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Isco, so I want to kind of go back, thank you, George. I want to go back a little bit to some of the questions that Councilmember Hanif had regarding the, the emergency placements with or without showers. And, and I get it, right? You're in an emergency, you have to put people someplace, and this is the only option you have that night. I'm not going to debate that. People need a place to stay. Are they there temporarily while you're trying to figure out a more long-term solution to moving them out of that space? Like, is the goal always, like, look, we're going to put you here tonight because we just have no place to put you, but we're working on moving you to a more suitable housing placement?
Yes. Excuse me, that's exactly right. These are short-term, temporary facilities. They are a waiting room while we wait to develop, build, or have the capacity in other sites that we can move people into that are either run by DHS, HPD, or Health and Hospitals.
Okay. Now, we've, I know I've suggested, and I know that the council, initially the Speaker and I issued, we issued a letter in the beginning of the, the crisis that highlighted a couple of, you know, spaces and locations, I guess, of some of the hotels. But part of the conversation was always, like, dealing with, like, the Catholic, with Catholic charities and some of the closed churches. Have those, have those conversations been ongoing?
Yep, and we've, we've been using a facility offered to us by Catholic charities. Again, every single site that we look at, and we've now looked at close to 1,000 sites, poses a range of challenges. And so, if there are sites that you can, and you have recommended sites, but if there are sites that, you know, Councilmember Hanif, that meet your standard in terms of the numbers of bathrooms and showers and space between cots that can fit 250, 300-plus people, send them our way. We'll take a look at them. But it's not just about identifying the space, right? We then have other issues with negotiating the, the lease.
The lease.
Around insurance. You know, there's a host of other issues around fire code, building code, infrastructure that's in place. All of these things need to be addressed at all of these different sites. So, just because something might even look good initially, it doesn't mean that it's actually something that we can use for a variety of reasons.
And what is the number of people that have come into the cities in the last week?
In the last week? So just because something might even look good initially, it doesn't mean that it's actually something that we can use for a variety of reasons.
And what is the number of people that have come into the cities in the last week?
In the last week? Dr. Long, do you know the number of folks that have been in the last week through the Welcome Center?
Through the Welcome Center, approximately 2,800.
2,800 in the last week?
Yeah.
Which, don't quote me on this number, but I think that is half of what Chicago has been, has received in the last year.
Yeah, no, no, this is, it's a crisis, and I think it's important that we all do our due diligence in ensuring that you, you know, that we have the resources that the families need, right? Because we're, we're all just trying to figure out, you know, what the pieces of the puzzle look like, but at the end of the day, these are people, individuals, human beings that are being impacted and, you know. So, so I'm going to move on to DHS because I think that there's been a lot of controversy, I don't think, I know, there's been a lot of controversy in the last couple of weeks regarding a couple of bills that this council introduced and passed, and I just want to kind of explain a little bit about, you know, background, give a little background about how we kind of arrived at those bills as a possible, not solution to the problem, but possible tools at our disposal. You know, we had a hearing, an oversight hearing with the SS, and we were discussing the issuance and processing of vouchers. And in that hearing, you know, I remember sitting here and I'm thinking, there has to be a better way to move, you know, to ensure that we're moving families out as expeditiously as possible. Because the truth is that independent of this crisis, we already had a shelter crisis. We had, you know, we have over 40,000 individuals in shelter. I believe over 20, 20-plus thousand of those are children. And so that conversation had, was being had prior to the asylum-seeking contributing to the numbers. And so we sat here, you know, trying to kind of figure out, well, what are the impediments, right? So we identified that the Office of Income Discrimination, which is not under your purview, was, was an impediment, right? That was, they were not processing income discrimination cases, the office was not adequately staffed, and so we've made, you know, numerous recommendations on, you know, the appropriate staffing ratios there and the need to really go after landlords that are bad actors that are discriminating against voucher holders. We also spoke about the right to counsel and the need to fully fund right to counsel as another tool to prevent people from becoming homeless, you know, in the first place. And then we got to kind of, you know, to the vouchers, and, you know, we, and I say this because many years ago, you know, I was a recipient of what was then the Jigits Program. And the Jigits Program was kind of like the first FEPs program, and it was a lawsuit, I believe it might have been Leguero that sued the city for families that weren't public assistance and were not receiving enough money to pay for rent. And as part of the Jigits Program, I received a small, it wasn't a subsidy, I think it was a credit that was attributed to the landlord for the cost of my, you know, my shelter. And I am eternally and forever grateful to that program because it allowed me the opportunity to have a roof over my head and, you know, the heads of my children, and not have to worry about that, right, while I try to figure out the rest of my life and go to school and, you know, just figure things out. And so I think that, you know, we take for granted the number of individuals in New York City that actually need subsidized housing. And you hear the debate all the time, oh, you're building affordable housing for who? And I think that that's coming from the percentage of individuals and folks that really need subsidized housing because their income is not changing for whatever circumstances and, you know, and sometimes people have disabilities and are not able to work, you know? And so we introduced this package of bills because we wanted to ensure that, one, we were getting at individuals, by changing the eligibility, we were getting to folks that were at the shelter, at the courthouse, ready to be evicted, because the criteria right now says, well, you have to be in the shelter in order to qualify. Well, why? If we can keep you in your apartment that you already have and save the added expense of housing you, right, which is way more expensive, and save you, you know, the trouble of having to look for an apartment, then that sounds like a reasonable thing to do, right? It sounds like common sense legislation. The 90-day rule waiver, you know, was done because we feel that in this housing crisis, right, where we're taking executive privileges, that one of those executive privileges should have been to eliminate that rule so that we were doing everything possible to get those families in and out as quickly as we could. And so I really wanted to put that out there because I don't want there to be this sentiment of, it's, you know, us against them, and this is what it's become, right, tit-for-tat. And at the end of the day, this is not about us, this is about those individuals that we're trying to help. And so my question to you is, in how, we know we have over 40,000 people in shelter, New Yorkers. How many are we moving out on average, on a yearly basis? Even during the last six months, like, how many families are actually exiting the system?
So, thank you first of all for having us, and, you know, Councilmember, you know, it's been really a tough year for all of us, right? The asylum seekers coming in, this unprecedented times. I don't have the numbers by month right now with me, and we can certainly come back to you with that information. Administration would make sure we circle back with that information by month because I don't have that with me today, and I don't want to go on record with something that's not true, so I will come back to you with that.
Okay, because my concern is that the asylum issue is going to be an ongoing situation. It's not going to resolve itself overnight. And so we can't really control that, right? As much as we have control over what we do in our city with the resources that we have that New Yorkers qualify for. And so what is DHS doing? Because if that package of bills is an impediment, then what is the alternative? What is, how is HPD, how is HPD, how, sorry, George, not you, not you. How is DHS working to move folks out of shelter? Because right now, the length of stay, the average, you know, length of stay is running a couple of years.
Yeah, so one of the things that I can say right now is that, you know, nearly 150,000 New Yorkers have left shelter since the implementation of City FEPs in 2014. That's 63,000 households that we have helped to move to permanency. And so for this fiscal year, we have connected a record number of households to City FEPs, and we're on track to outpace the number of households connected to City FEPs in prior years. And so I think that we have, from July to April 2023, a record number of households to City FEPs vouchers, and we are going to be on pace to outpace the number of households connected to City FEPs in prior years. So we are making progress there.
But how are we doing in terms of staffing? I say this because just a couple of weeks ago, we had an individual calling the office, had a City FEPs voucher, got an apartment. The processing, you know, time was just so arduous that they lost the apartment because the landlord could no longer afford to wait for the city to, you know, process the documentation. And that's, you know, one of several cases that I personally, you know, know about. And that's the problem, right? How are we addressing that?
So I first, you know, we have been working to fill vacancies, we're doing drop fairs, we're using other modes of putting out our vacancies such as LinkedIn, which we haven't used in the past. So we're making ourselves very visible to get additional staffers onto us. So we have been making progress there.
Okay, but my concern again is primarily around ensuring that we're moving folks out, and if we're not appropriately staffed, you know, then we need to figure out how we pivot and how, you know, I mean, we had a nursing shortage not too long ago, you know, at some of our hospitals, and unfortunately, not, you know, I think that I'm proud of, but we had to go and outsource nurses, we had to bring them in, we have no other choice, right? This is an emergency. And I think that the idea here is that this is costing us so much money, and there is no real end in sight. And without all of the pieces of the puzzle kind of, you know, fitting together, and that's all of you, then one cannot move without the other. And DHS is really pretty much the centerpiece here, right? We have not been successful in trying to get folks, you know, to address those hindrances, right? Those little nuances that I spoke about earlier that are keeping folks in the system far longer than we anticipate. And I also want to add that I did bring this up, and I think that this is a conversation for HPD, but we, you know, we have identified, you know, the city identified, the newspaper identified, you know, well, I think it was like almost over 30, 40,000 registered as, you know, vacant rent-stabilized units. We could be working with the HCR, you know, working with the state to try to identify those landlords, to try to figure out how to, you know, incentivize some sort of a relationship where that's mutually beneficial here, right, where we can bring, you know, they can rent to families in shelter. And I want to also add that not everybody that's in shelter qualifies for City FEPs, right? We have people that are working, we have people that, you know, have other sources of income. What is the percentage of folks that qualify for City FEPs?
I'll come back to you with that, Councilmember, but the reality is, as you said, not everybody qualifies. There are other ways that people exit from our system, and we do have a relationship, we work well with HPD, looking at a variety of ways of people exit the system. So it's not just City FEPs, it's a multitude of ways that that does happen.
Okay, yeah. What is the vacancy rate at HPD now? Because I know that, you know, Commissioner Iskall, you know, kind of talked about, right, we have a fire, we have an emergency, usually what will happen is that the Red Cross will come in, and then they'll place families for three days, and then they'll give you a referral to go into shelter and, you know, but they go into the HPD shelters, not the DHS shelters, which I hear great things about. But what is the capacity at those sites now?
The HPD shelters?
Yes.
I'll get back to you on the specific number, Councilmember Ayala, but we work really closely with ARC as well to kind of augment and supplement. So it, the first step is, you know, there's a fire, we work with ARC to put folks in a hotel for a few days, you know? And then we work with the tenants in the hotels to make sure they're placed in HPD shelters. So the three fires Commissioner Iskall was talking about, we're actually successfully working with those folks to get them room in our shelters right now. There's capacity for them, but, you know, this is kind of a very fluid thing. People come, people go, so I'll get you the most current number when I get back to the office.
Okay, great, but yeah, I really would love to know what the number of move-outs is and any, any policy, internal policies that, you know, DHS is working on to try to, you know, I mean, like, listen, I am very hands-on, but I'm a little bit, you know, self-diagnosed OCD, and I would be sitting at home every night trying to figure this out from every single angle, like, nobody would be going home because this is that important. It is, you know, so, we need to get this right. This is going to be a part of, you know, our history, and we want to make sure that we're on the right side of it. So we don't, you know, I don't expect that we're always going to be agreeing on every aspect of the work that we do, but I think that it would really make everybody's life a little bit easier if there was a little bit more communication. So I think that in those cases where we do have to make accommodations that may not be ideal, that, you know, that you form a relationship with the council members and say that, because I think when I get a phone call and people tell me, hey, you know, this is what's going on, I, you know, I understand that, right? Unfortunately, and this is a reality, I get most of my information from Room 9 these days, and that shouldn't be the way that we govern, especially when we are saying we want to be helpful. You know, if you don't let us, in one way, we're going to come in anyway, and it's not going to be pretty. So, you know, let's try to figure this out, because I think that there's a lot of work that we can do. I want to recognize that we've also been joined by councilmembers Riley, Wrestler, and Brewer. Councilmember Hanif has a couple of questions, and then we are gonna, yeah, then we will turn it over to Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. Coming back to the Respite Centers, Commissioner Iskall, just want to get some clarity. Is it possible moving forward that the Respite Centers will be used to house families with children in congregate settings?
That is absolutely not our intent.
Okay, not, so that means that as you're looking for facilities for families, you are absolutely avoiding having to put families in congregants?
As much as possible.
Okay.
I mean, as I have always said, you've heard it here before,
No, and I appreciate it.
Everything is on the table, but it is absolutely not our intent.
It is what we want to keep here.
And we are doing everything in our power to avoid that.
Thank you. We deeply appreciate that, particularly because myself and others were really concerned last month about the Gramercy site and families being placed there. And then are there specific priorities you're showing to children? Could you walk us through just the scope of services for children and between the ages of toddler to elementary school, middle, and older students?
Yes, I'll take it even past the, before the toddler stage too. We've actually had a few hundred women at our HERCs alone that have delivered babies since they arrived in New York City. So we have a welcome-to-New York City package that we give them, and then at the HERCs we have everything as a father of a two-year-old and a four-year-old, there's a lot, a lot you need. But we have them sign a safe sleeping arrangement with us, they get a pack-and-play as appropriate for kids less than two, they get everything that they need to take care of infants, and then through being a toddler, things like that. So I would say our care really starts with women that are coming to New York City pregnant, also women that are coming to New York City with infants. And then carrying forward through there, I think one of the things that we've learned on day one, yeah, I think you've heard me say this before, we, when we opened our first sites, didn't have DOE on-site. We weren't enrolling kids in school immediately because we were still trying to figure out how we were reconnecting people to different places across the country, things like that. But I remember the first time we got, and this has become a core thing that we've done to really materially improve the lives of children, we first had the first DOE representative on-site, there was a line around the hotel, at the Ro Hotel. And since then, DOE has been an incredible partner enrolling thousands of kids at our HERCs alone, I'll turn to Administrator Carter on the DHS side in a moment, immediately into school. And you see the effect when they run to school buses every morning. Again, yeah, you see kids that formerly experienced trauma coming to New York City, experienced anxiety, depression, a variety of other things, but now when they're getting on the school buses, they have smiles wrapped around their faces. It's because we've enrolled them into school, it's because on-site, we have mental health care workers, we have medical care on-site, we're giving them vaccines, we're protecting them, and they feel protected, and we're plugging them into longitudinal care too. At Bellevue, we've created a fast track, if you will, for asylum-seeking children so they're getting all of the healthcare, including mental health care that they need. So we've learned a lot along the way. Enrolling kids in school, I think, is one of the most important lessons we've learned. I'm proud to say that we've done it thousands of times now, and that's changing thousands of lives. I'll turn to Administrator Carter for DHS.
And just to follow up for Dr. Long,
Yeah.
the services that are on-site are specifically the HERCs. Are there similar services for youth in the Respite Centers? Just wanted to-
We don't have youth in the-
Okay, that's a good clarification.
Yeah.
But for the youth in HERCs, there are specific sort of mental health services, options, and then maybe other programming in addition to school that are made available to young people?
Absolutely, and a couple of examples are, we've been fortunate to have the Girl Scouts, for example, bring their troop to enroll our kids, and you see the smile on my face. I mean, it really is a powerful scene, the support that's created when the Girl Scouts come in, and then they start to do projects together. They're even getting, I think it's called their, it's not agriculture, but botany badge, I think, by doing planting around the Roosevelt Hotel, a different hotel, to beautify that space and just, again, become part of the community.
That's really, that's really wonderful. I just visited a school in my district, the Cyber Arts Studio Academy, which has welcomed many middle school, high schoolers who are asylum seeker students, and the arts program has now been sort of transformed, just de-emphasizing English and really emphasizing artistic talent. And the video they shared with me was just so inspiring to really hear from students entirely in Spanish, just articulating how high school and having this arts program has really supported their attendance and healing and their journey in finding a support crew of friends, supportive crew of friends.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, and I'm actually going to start there as you talked about that art piece. We've had some private partnerships, NYU actually comes in to our sites and do art for both mothers and children. One of the things that we find is that art is very helpful in relieving and expressing trauma, and so we've had that opportunity to do that. But to start in terms of other programming, we have, like Dr. Long said, every family that comes with us who are pregnant or have children, we do show them a safe sleep video life to love, and they're signing that they see that, making sure that they have a crib or pack-and-play. We're making sure that we do unit inspections, that the children are sleeping in cribs on their backs. Moms who have, first-time moms, we work in the Department of Health and Mental Health to have folks coming in to make sure they're working with the moms around having newborns and making sure that if there's post-trauma, you know, postpartum depression, that they're working with them around that. We do work with H&amp;H, you know, in terms of any kind of services that the children, moms or other individuals may need, we do have that. We do, we do the Department of Education, they're on our sites, they come and visit to make sure children are connected to schools as well as after-school programming. This summit is summarizing through the Department of Education that the children can access, and they have signed up for that, every space is, you know, has been signed up for, and that, you know, asylum seeker children- children have been, you know, completely using that. It's also for the children that we have summer camps, they're doing that locally, and some of our providers are doing programming for the summer. And so we have a variety of the young children that's happening with us now.
Thank you so much. Coming back to Commissioner Iskall, do you believe that there should be any minimum standards in place for emergency housing?
Um...
And if yes, what are those parameters that you all, you consider?
I would need to circle back with my team and come back to you. I mean, look, again, I'll say this, you know, I've said it before, the health and safety of the folks in our care is the utmost priority. We have a lot of sort of standards in our coastal storm plan. As I said, we have invited Legal Aid Society, Department of Health, and others to come through the sites and sort of help figure out ways that we can improve what we're doing there. You know, but again, I think that there's just the nature of emergencies is such that sometimes you have to make really, really hard choices. And I think when you look at the number of locations we are operating these respite centers, not a single one of them, I would tell you, is the ideal place to be doing any of this. But it's what we have available, and I think we're doing a remarkable job with what we have, considering we don't have support from the federal government. You know, emergency management, number one, is when you have an emergency and the local jurisdiction has precedence until they are out of resources. And they turn around and ask for the help from the state, they turn around and ask for help from the emergency, from the federal government. I can't think of another emergency where the local jurisdiction has turned around to hand off the football and ask for help, and we have not gotten it. And considering those constraints, you know, even those constraints aside, I am blown away by the job that this city has done over the last year.
Sure, and again, want to extend our gratitude, as we've done, but it would be wonderful to hear from you just what you think are some of the minimum standards. And I, I know you've underscored health and safety, but I'd like to know how you define health and safety.
I would be happy to have that conversation with you. I think my concern, again, is oftentimes, especially with an unprecedented emergency, there's no precedent for it, and in those cases, you know, without knowing what you might have to deal with, what are those, what are those minimum standards that might have to be overcome, provide a bare minimum of just a bed and a place for people to stay out of the elements, right? And so I think it's a longer conversation, but would love to have that for you.
I'd welcome that longer conversation, but want to make clear that New York City has a responsibility, and at every crisis moment, at every political upheaval and roller coasters, this city has stood strong, and it is why we are a cornerstone for where people want to live and make community, and it's why we are a city that we are right now. And so I think as much as you've been emphasizing that we're in this unprecedented crisis moment, we equally have a responsibility to show what it looks like to offer dignity. And that's really the premise of the two bills that, you know, I'd love to further engage the administration about, because we want to be able to have protections that don't undermine and erode our right to shelter mandate, while acknowledging that we are in an unprecedented time of welcoming many, many families and individuals who really have no other options at this moment.
And I would just say that I think this city has stood incredibly strong during this unprecedented crisis.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then I wanted some clarification. You use the words "subject to suspension" in reference to Intros 942 and 943. Are you saying that if the council were to pass these bills, the administration would pass an executive order to override them?
What I'm saying is, is that if there was an emergency that occurred, that it would be likely that the mayor would issue an emergency declaration that would suspend that legislation so that we could flexibly respond and meet the basic needs of New Yorkers.
That's really disappointing, and I mean, we would like more communication about the expansion of the respite centers or as more HIRCs get created, and welcome the, I don't know if they're now bi-weekly or once a month, the updates as to how many people are in the city's care. The last update had, you know, nine HIRCs, and to get the updates from HPD on the upstate of facilities, I mean, that was really informative, and, you know, I think the council is really dedicated to ensuring that these other municipalities have the similar detainer protections that New York City has. As folks go to other parts of the state, they are more at risk of being stopped by ICE and the collusion between ICE and local law enforcement and deportation. And so we really want to be thoughtful, and I, you know, George, it's the first time I'm meeting you here, and I've heard such incredible things about you from my colleagues, would welcome a longer conversation about the piece, that is, the upstate piece. And of course, we've heard from some of our providers who have been doing some legal services work, and the incredible community partners that are making sure that our neighbors in Buffalo and Albany are showing up in open arms and countering the anti-immigrant rhetoric that is also coming from the leaders of those municipalities. And then my final question before I go to Councilmember Brewer. What steps does the administration think that councilmembers who are committed to improving conditions for recent arrivals should be taking right now, aside from lobbying for more state and federal funding, which we have done, and suggesting sites in our district, which we have also done? I have sent several emails of proposed locations, and I know that the admin is identifying whether it fit, whether the locations fit within the parameters, and the lease piece is particularly important, too, that I've learned about. What else would you suggest of this council?
Yeah, thank you, I love that question. So, you know, the administration has been very clear in all of our conversations with electeds and otherwise, that the things that we need help with is seeking greater support from the federal government, as you said, workforce authorizations for this population, that is truly the exit strategy. In addition to that, finding sites, you know, the RFP has existed that the EDC put out since, I think, January. In addition to that, if there are sites that meet your requirements in terms of bathrooms, numbers of showers, that you think we could safely house 250, 300 people, if the city council wants to put together a list of eight, 10 of those sites, I am happy to send my team out this afternoon to go start looking at them.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Brewer? Oh, I want to recognize we've joined by Councilmember Rita Joseph and Purina Sanchez.
And Moya online.
Thank you very much. Quick question. First of all, thank you for the tours and for the access, much appreciated. I think I've been to most of the HIRCs and certainly some of the emergency. Number one, the Councilmember Ayala asked, why can't there be more help coordination, coordinations? Let me give you an example. When you come to a community, particularly with a single-room occupancies around the city or hotels that may not have extra space, my suggestion would be, before you arrive, even if it's, you know, a day's notice, what are the nearby faith-based and what are the nearby nonprofits? Because what happens is, you've got the, I love the guys from the National Guard, but they're from, you know, upstate, and I love the, you know, DHS staff, but they're from the Bronx. They don't know nothing about Manhattan, it's like, I don't know nothing about the Bronx. So you've got to be able to have that information in advance. Let me give you an example of why. Obviously, we want to try to get some kitchens, because people want to cook. We can do that. Number two, space, because the SROs don't have any space. So therefore, if we want to have NICE come, if we want to have an OSHA class or whatever, we need space. So to have that available, otherwise, we're scrambling to make sure it exists. A suggestion. Number two, in other words, what are you doing along those lines? Number two, delivery bikes, that's how everybody's getting around, so court, the neighborhoods, anyway, and I bet it's going to happen in Albany, Buffalo, and everybody else. Dr. Long knows this problem. I got 45 delivery bikes in front of the SRO. That's a problem, but I don't know where they're going to put them. I don't know where else we're going to put them. Meanwhile, you've got neighbors complaining, so what are we going to do with the delivery bikes? Number three, I know TPS, I've been talking about working papers since day one, Krista Price can't get them, Haikim can't get them, et cetera. It's up to the president. We don't have them, but there are some, I mean, Nicaraguans, Haitians, et cetera, they do get them. So my question is, what are you doing with those in the system, everybody who has that group that is eligible for TPS? How are we helping them to get a job? There are some, I've run into them. Number three, I want to know how many people are getting health insurance. Number four, I have to give my friend, Mr. Wrestler, credit, because he talked about in the paper the other day, supportive housing and NICA. I'm concerned about the supportive housing, he has a big number, so it's all his credit. But how quickly can you go from here to his supportive housing? That's, those are my questions. What's the timeframe from doing that? And that would be particularly DHS and those who are from New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm going to take a couple of those questions. The last one around supportive housing and NICA, you know, supportive housing is HRA and DOHMH, so I can't really speak collectively to that, you know, I can't really give that and NICA. So we'll come back and have those particular agencies really speak to that. The, you know, one of the things that happened this last year with the numbers of people coming in, we opened a ton of sites, and you know it's been hard for us to get staffing for the providers to really be a part of the sites, and so I am operating sites with just temporary staff, overtime staff, National Guards, but as they get staffing on, we're rolling them back. So I would, you know, those temporary staff that we have there from the Bronx and Manhattan, that type of thing is what I have at this point. We are pushing to get providers onboard, but it was so quick, and as, you know, we thought this was going to be, he'll be there for six weeks and the provider will take over in this sector, that hasn't happened, because we can't find the staffing to do that. So it has slowed down, but what we did find is that now we have two, we have one temporary agency that's really now having some staff there that's not, you know, kind of rotating out, so they can actually learn the neighborhood, know what's in the community, be able to direct people to do that and make connections. So we are working to be able to, you know, kind of work around that, because I do know that it's hard, and I wouldn't know the Bronx at all, you know, I'm from, you know, South Brooklyn. So, you know, trying to figure out how do we do that. So, you know, I hear that, we'll figure out as we move forward how to do that, but I do think there's some opportunity for us to be able to do that. You know, the supportive housing, faith-based, making those connections, and, you know, absolutely, we're making connections with all faith-based and the community partners. You know, we've been working to do that for the last year to do that piece, but in terms of opening so quickly, when we started that, it was really a quick, you know, turnaround to be able to do that. And any other questions?
Yeah. Hi, Councilmember Brewer. I think there's three questions I'll share some thoughts on here. The first was about the delivery bikes. So actually, I'll add on one thing to Commissioner Iskall, what he said a minute ago about how you all can help us. One, and we're out of time, one key way that you could help us is exactly what you're doing now, giving us feedback from the communities, as you know, goes a really long way. I remember when we...
That's easy.
It's easy, low-hanging fruit, but it's very impactful, and I'll give a quick example to that. At the Watson, when we moved into that community, I myself met with several community members that lived across the street, implemented all of the changes they recommended, things got a lot better at the site. So let's do the same thing. I know your team's actually coming to the tour tomorrow at the Upper West Side dorms, so let's figure out the solution for that together. I think it's a great example. Your second, the second question I wanted just to quickly talk about is the different ways in which you can start to work. So as everybody knows, there's the 765 Work Authorization Form, but then there's other things like TPS or Temporary Protected Status that would enable you to work potentially more quickly. So working with Moya, that's the type of information that we're seeking to gather now, while we've created the idea of the Arrival Center, because before the Arrival Center, we didn't have one unified place where we were able to ask the same questions, collect the same information, figure out who needed what type of legal support, things like that. So with the Arrival Center, we can now collect that information, working with Moya on what the right questions are, and then also, as I'm sure you saw, the new Application Assistance Center, which will be at the Red Cross, that will be how we can triage people into that to get what, depending what they're, where they are in the asylum-seeking and work authorization process, getting them connected in the right way. So you're thinking about it the same way we are. I think it's going to be an ongoing, important part of our work that we should stay in touch about. Third thing is, I'll give you a concrete answer on this, you asked about health insurance enrollment. So at my sites, which of course are the Health and Hospitals, HIRCs, the Arrival Center, and my team at the Navigation Center, we just surpassed 12,000 people that we alone have enrolled in health insurance. And as a doctor, you know what I'm going to say, that to me is 12,000 lives potentially saved.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you so much, Chairs, and a good afternoon to the entire city team. I first just wanted to start with acknowledgement and a thank you for the earnestness with which you all work, and you are continuing to work on this crisis, you know, that is facing our city, this really difficult challenge that is before us. I think it's just always important to acknowledge that, you know, everyone is working so hard, and the heart, our hearts are in the right place. And that's actually, you know, I have a sort of a statement and a question, because that heart is in the right places, is where I want to kind of like focus today, and that is this council passed legislation, you know, two weeks ago now, that is trying to make our shelter system more efficient, you know, the perhaps voucher eligibility, the 90-day rule. And I just want to share a statement today that I hope that the mayor and that the administration, that the mayor will sign, that the administration will implement these measures that are really meant to make our systems more efficient. And it's really important to say that, you know, we are tackling the same issue, we are coming from the same place, and we're trying to serve the same people. And I just really want to appreciate that and want to just overemphasize that, you know, we are, we are trying to make the systems that we have today more efficient so that we can serve more individuals, you know, coming into our city and stabilize our communities that need that stability. And so my question today is really with respect to the HPD HIRC, so just want to focus on that. Can you, hello, hello, Mr. Sarkisian, can you just share a little bit specifically about the Jefferson HIRC? What are some major differences between Jefferson HIRC and maybe other sites that we, other HIRCs that we have? Are there private areas for medical consultations and services, and are there separate areas for accessing services that may require disclosing sensitive information?
Yeah, so the first question, the services you'll find at 455 Jefferson and Bushwick are the exact same services, Councilmember, you'll find at all of the H&amp;H HIRCs. You know, folks have a roof over their head, they have three meals a day, they have medical service, they have laundry service, case management, social services. As far as the medical services, there is a private area, we have 24/7 medical services on-site with a nurse practitioner that can help folks. We also have private areas for folks to meet with some of the caseworkers, if they have sensitive information that they need to share. So it's the exact same model, staffing, and integrated system that you'll find with the H&amp;H folks.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there any difference in who is administering the services, city agencies, service providers, any notable differences?
Well, we contract with a company named Garner that, you know, this is kind of what they do, they push into disaster zones and kind of set up shelter, food, and medical services, this is their thing. So we're contracted with them, they're operating 455 Jefferson, they have subcontractors they're working with, they're working with a company named Level Up that's a medical service provider in the neighborhood, so they're physically in the building, doing the work, and they've contracted with other folks for security and food, et cetera.
Thank you. And how does that compare to some of the upstate sites that were being discussed earlier?
Yeah, exact same services, actually, just a different company. I mentioned earlier, the company for upstate is DOT Go, they're a mobile, mobile medical services provider that has a lot of experience doing kind of HIRC-type work here in the city. And so folks upstate get three meals a day, they get, you know, they get medical services when they need it, they get access to medic, sorry, access to social services, case management, laundry services, everything we do in Bushwick, we do at all our upstate sites.
Great, thank you. Just final question, how do complaints get filtered to HPD and the agencies from these sites? How do we know how we're doing?
Yeah, so we have folks, we have actually six dedicated staff that are in charge of kind of the operations of these sites. So they're actually reading all the reports and communicating back to the contractors. You know, we get morning and afternoon reports, and in those reports, if there's incidents, anything that kind of pops up, we'll review it and we'll call the site operators and ask them a few more questions, like, what happened there? Why was, you know, why was there an involuntary discharge? Please let us know more about the incident. And we do site visits as well, to kind of connect physically with the spaces.
Can I add one thing on to that, too? One thing that's refined the HIRC program, which is true at the Jefferson site, true at our 10 other... at our 10 other HRCs, and true, of course, what we're doing upstate, is we've done a lot of surveys of our guests to ask them what their experience is, how they're accessing different forms of care. And one that may seem minor, but actually has been really important to us, because guests tell us it's very important, is the type of food that we're serving at all of our different sites. So we've had this interesting challenge of, with the diversity of populations coming to us, what types of food would people that are coming here from Venezuela and from Senegal both want to eat if we're serving one meal? No better way than surveying everybody there and asking them, what would you want? What do you want? How do you rate the meals that we've had so far? So it turns out things, for example, nobody likes roast beef, myself included, but everybody likes Italian food. And we've, on the specific menu, line by line, we do door-knocking surveys to see what people want, what their experience is, and in particular, to refine the menu that we have at all of our sites. And that's, I think your question's really important about how we've improved the HRC program overall.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Chairs, for this important hearing. And we want to collaborate, from the speaker to the deputy speaker, on to the rest of us. We want to be collaborative, so open spirit here. Thank you.
Sorry, we're waiting for Councilmember Ressler.
We are always multitasking.
You're lucky you're not the Parks Department right now. Sorry. At some point, Bushwick and the park is going to get built and it will be joyous. But today, we're talking about more important things. And I really just want to thank our really extraordinary Chairs, Councilmember Hanif, and Councilmember Ayala, for their leadership. I have a number of different questions. I'll try to cover as much as they give me latitude to cover. Just firstly, want to thank you all for joining us today. And while I think you've heard concerns, frustrations about the city's response, I, you know, appreciate and respect each of you as professionals and know that you and your staffs and the folks that you've hired are doing their best in a difficult set of circumstances. So just want to thank you for your hard work. Just first, a question for Administrator Carter. Over the last year, how much has the DHS census increased?
Good question, Councilmember. Our census almost have doubled.
Doubled. And yet, Mayor Adams has imposed a 2.5% peg, severe peg, that will dramatically limit, stretch DHS services despite taking responsibility for twice as many people. That makes negative logic to me. Could you help in any way explain how DHS is going to serve twice as many people with notably fewer resources?
So, Councilmember, you know, we have had an unprecedented crisis, and the mayor's been clear that that has really been difficult for the city to absorb. We haven't gotten much help from our other, you know, state and federal partners, and so the city has taken on a lot of that cost.
It's well over a billion dollars in state and federal aid, there should be more. But that's separate and apart from why the mayor is choosing to cut DHS. I just am deeply disappointed and concerned, and I'm hopeful that Speaker Adams will be able to get these funds restored in the budget negotiations. I have a, just a couple of questions on data, because I find it very confusing to track what is happening across the purview of all of these different agencies, the report to multiple different deputy mayors. It is confounding. So today, I'm just going to go down the line. George, how many asylum seekers are in HPD control or under HPD purview?
So we have 2,350 asylum seekers.
2,350. And can you break that population down like Administrator Carter graciously does for us every day, by single adults, adult families, and families with children?
I'll get back to that. Almost all of our asylum seekers are single adults or adult families. We have a few families with children in hotels in New York City as well. I'll get you that number in a second.
Ted, Dr. Long, nice to see you.
Oh, sorry, sorry, real quick, real quick. So we actually have 1,100 families with children in our downstate hotels.
1,100?
Families with children in our downstate hotels, correct.
In hotels that are under HPD purview?
Correct, correct.
So that 1,100 families with children is separate and apart from the 2,350?
No, no, it's inclusive of it.
That doesn't make sense. 2,350 was the total number of households?
No, no, 20, sorry, the 1,100 are families with children, the total number of people that are in families with children.
Got it, so 300 odd families.
Not independent households.
Three to 400 families, 1,100 people. So 2,350, so half your population is FDCs.
A little less than half, that's right.
Half is adult families and single adults. Dr. Long, could you provide a similar breakdown for us in the same total number and breakdown of those three populations, if you might?
Yes. So in our H and H HRCs, which are 10 HRCs today, we have 12,593 people. Breaking that down by population, under five, 1,540, five to seven--
Are you able to break it down in the way that Administrator Carter does, just for comparison across the board? She does single adults, families with children, and adult families.
I can do all of that. It might be, I have all of the data literally in front of me, but maybe we could send an email later today just to, so I don't have to peel through it right now.
It would be very helpful to have that breakdown by population. We've been trying in our office, we've reached out to many folks across the administration to just get a hard number on the asylum seekers, numbers of families with kids, and it's in part because, as you can see, across multiple agencies, it's been challenging to receive direct answers. So we can get an email from you today, Dr. Long, with that information?
So the exact question, because I just want to make sure I'm answering it correctly, is the number of households with families with children at one of my 10 sites?
Number of families with children, number of adult families, number of single adults.
Numbers of families with children, households, 2,800.
2,000.
Adult families, 839. These are households, adult family households.
This is, this is number of households, not number of people.
Correct.
Got it.
And then, single adults, which are obviously single, so household doesn't apply, 1,393. I can break that down by individuals.
No, no, you're fine. That's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Administrator Carter, I know that it gets a little complicated, but can you provide the numbers for asylum seekers that are within DHS care, similar breakdown?
Yes, yes, Senator, you know, now I'm nervous because, you know, like, we do it all the time. Okay.
You do, you send out a daily census report. It's very helpful and we appreciate it.
You know, as of, I think this is as of 620.
Okay, that's good enough. My sister's anniversary.
Okay, families with children, just over 60, almost 76700, which is 6690. Single adults, 485. Adult families, 981.
Say that last one for me again, I'm sorry.
Adult families, 981.
981. So 981 adult families, 485 single adults, and I heard 761 families with children?
4,885 single adults.
4,485, that is an important distinction.
6,690 families with children.
And there's families with children, I'm sorry for being so dense. 6,690. And does that include your total DHS population includes asylum seekers and non-asylum seekers?
This is asylum seekers only?
Okay. So, okay, that is very helpful. Thank you for providing that data. The next set of questions I have relate to, oh, is it okay if I keep going for two more minutes, Chairs? You're not angry with me? You'll kick me when I, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, I'm hurrying up. Okay, I got a few questions on disabilities and then on move-outs. So briefly, how can our HRC system accommodate people with disabilities if they are reducing the accessible capacity they have? If we, how are, I'm concerned about the HRC's ability to accommodate people with disabilities. We've been told that you can't serve people with disabilities in respite sites. How are they being screened? Are we confident that we're meeting all of our ADA requirements and serving people with disabilities effectively?
Yeah, great question. So part of the premise behind having the Arrival Center is so that, again, we can ask the same questions, which include disability questions and disability screens, in one place, and then figure out where the most appropriate place to send you from the Arrival Center would be. So as you just said, if you're a person living with a disability, in particular, let's say it's a mobility impairment, you're not going to go to one of the respite sites. You're going to go to, for example, it could be to one of my, one of my 10 HRCs. And then the way that process would work is we're identifying if you are a person living with a disability as one question, and what the nature of your disability is, and then where we see, where we see where your needs can be best met within the system that we have. We do that every day, and we did have the opportunity, I know our colleagues are here from Legal Aid Society, and that we're going to be going on another tour tomorrow to see our new, two new HRCs. But I would say, based on feedback that Legal Aid Society has given us, we've refined that process over time, and that's been part of the inspiration of having the Arrival Center, to make sure that we ask the same questions to everybody upfront in the same way.
Thank you. And then lastly, I'd just like to ask about move-outs. We, you know, in the DHS system, traditionally start talking about housing on day one, right? And start trying to find housing solutions for people from their very first stay, first day in shelter. I am deeply disturbed by the ever-increasing number of units that are in cities, in the city's control that are vacant. The eightfold increase in vacant NYCHA apartments, the steady increase in vacant supportive housing, and frankly, many other forms of housing that are vacant in New York City that we are not managing effectively as an administration. I imagine that you all do regular meetings with Deputy Mayor Williams Isom and other leadership, members of the leadership team here at City Hall. Why are we not focused on housing solutions in those meetings? Why are we not throwing resources at speeding up the renovations and occupancy of our public housing developments and supportive housing developments as a part of the solution to this crisis? These are resources that are fully within the control of Mayor Adams.
Councilmember Ressler, like I said, you know, earlier when you're actually not in--
No, I heard you say it, that it's HRA. But it's, I get who's at the table, but you're--
So I think we're going to make sure that we'll have the administration come back with some answers.
I appreciate it, but this is the thing. Y'all are the folks that they decided to send today to represent how we're addressing the asylum seeker crisis. These are housing resources at our disposal, housing solutions that can help us address capacity. I'm disappointed that y'all can't speak to what we are doing to ensure full expedited occupancy of the city, the permanent housing resources that are in our control.
I can chime in, Lincoln. So, you know, from HPD's perspective, we've been working this past year, you know, like, you know, Commissioner Amitagani and a bunch of his folks have been like meeting almost weekly with industry folks to speed, to think about reforms we can make to our process to speed up placements, particularly homeless placements. And so they've actually made a lot of progress over the, over the year. We can have a specific sit-down with you?
I would welcome it. I was really disappointed to see HPD cut $14.7 million from their budget on supportive housing this year due to Mayor Adams' budget cuts, just as I was disappointed to see the mayor cut funding from NYCHA's Vacancy Ready Needs Program. If we don't fund these initiatives, we can't activate the housing. If we don't fund the staff at your agencies, then we can't process the applications. I really think that we are really wasting money in very expensive emergency shelter solutions to meet the needs of asylum seekers instead of making the right short-term investments to maximize permanent housing for people who are in shelter. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a few more follow-ups and then we will close out. Thank you so much. So I wanted to understand the intent of the request to have the consent decree be rewritten to include a provision that allows the city to suspend right to shelter when the city lacks the resources and capacity to establish and maintain sufficient shelter sites. I know you might respond that there's a pending litigation and may not be able to share comprehensively responses to my questions, but would like to just put it in the record in case you do have anything to share about the court filing. Why did the administration file this request?
You are right. So we're not lawyers at the table, and so we really can't comment on ongoing litigation. But, you know, the city does not want to end the right to shelter, and so we're going to refer questions around litigation back to the Law Department. We're not able to answer those questions here today.
Understood. So would it also require a lawyer to be present if I wanted to know if the administration achieves its desired impact or outcome from the court, what policies it would specifically change?
Yes, it's the same question, right? It's, we're, you know, at the table here, we're not the folks to answer those questions, so we're going to refer you to the Law Department.
Understood. And then the mayor signed Executive Order 402, which again, suspended the right, parts of the right to shelter. What actions has the administration taken that absent Executive Order 402, it would be otherwise prohibited from doing?
So, Councilman, what I will say is that, you know, over the past year, the administration has really worked tirelessly in the unprecedented crisis, right? No one predicted we'll be here a year ago when I sat here, right? So we were here a year ago talking about the crisis that was beginning at the time and how we were responding to that. But, you know, the demand and the way we responded to this emergency and to this crisis really shows that the administration and all of us at this table have really acted humanely. So, you know, we are continuing to work with those who are coming to us, even when all of us, you know, the city is, you know, strained at this point. So, right, so we continue to treat every person that comes to us with, you know, with dignity and respect.
I understand that, and I don't want to fight that. And I think over and over throughout the last several hours, we've acknowledged the amount of work the administration has put in to welcome asylum seekers and applauded the work of city workers and the agency partnerships, but that didn't answer my question.
Yeah, you know, you asked a question earlier that I've been thinking about, and that's about standards of these, of these facilities. And I've been thinking about it, and I think this sort of gets to your question now. And, you know, yes, there should be standards. I don't think they should be legislated. And I think the intent behind some of these things that you're asking about right now is just to provide us the flexibility we need to respond to this unprecedented crisis. And that's really what, what we're looking for with the different executive orders, with some of the emergency declarations. It's just that flexibility for us to be able to respond as best we can during this unprecedented crisis.
I understand. I think I'll have to double down on the fact that, you know, the first panelist who spoke from the Legal Aid Society shared that there'd been other attempts to override or pull away from the right to shelter decree and have failed. And so we don't want the unprecedented consequences as a result of what could be the reality when we erode the city's right to shelter foundation.
And I would say, and I've said this before, actions speak louder than words. I think the actions that this city has taken over the last year to house what, nearly 78, 80,000 people, shows that we're committed to providing shelter to people.
Absolutely. No one is setting your, no one is saying you're not. What we are debating here is that folks shouldn't need to walk out of a facility to take a bath or to take a shower. And so that remains the conversation of today, and we look forward to continued engagement.
Again, those are short-term facilities, right?
They haven't been short-term facilities.
They are, they are places that, they are places that we have solved for the shower--
I would appreciate if you're not talking over me. Could you share what the minimum stay has been for family, for folks at the respite centers that don't have showers onsite?
The minimum stay, or you're looking for the maximum?
Minimum and maximum.
So the average right now, the average stay is about two weeks. The intent was always just a few days. That's not where we are with this unprecedented crisis. And again, almost all of these facilities now have showers onsite or a shower solution for the folks that are staying there. We also prioritize at the sites that don't have showers, getting those people out into other facilities as quickly as possible for that reason. But again, if the city council, if yourself, would like to provide us a list of eight, 10, 12 places that meet your standard, that we can move into, I will have my team look at them today.
Falling back on telling us to provide those when we have consistently shared with you all, we are just trying to do our work here in ensuring that we are centering dignity because it is the administration's role in conducting the operations of housing. And so right now, while we've extended ourselves and await the updates and the conversations, the briefings that happen, for a stronger partnership. But I will not accept that for folks that need to walk out of a facility to take a shower is the best that we can be offering folks at this moment.
It is better than people sleeping on the street.
And we don't want that. We absolutely don't want that, which is why we don't want to erode our city's right to shelter decree. And then finally, I'll just add that if, if, in your definition, short term is two weeks, is that, is that what you're saying, that a short-term stay is two weeks?
The hope was a couple of days. That's not where we are. We're out of space, Councilmember.
No, I get that. I'm just trying to understand this sort of concept of here, this is a short-term stay versus this is a longer-term stay. versus this is a longer-term stay.
It's as short as possible.
Okay. Well, that is all the questions we have for now, and we will be following up. I think we have more questions than we came with, and I deeply appreciate your frankness, your honesty, and the continued work to ensure that every asylum seeker in our city is treated with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll be hearing from New York City Comptroller Brad Lander.
You may begin, good sir.
Ready when you are.
We're ready.
Oh, okay. Good afternoon, and thank you Chairs Hanif and Ayala for calling this important hearing on the oversight of the emergency shelters and humanitarian emergency response and relief centers, or HRCs, that have been opened over the past year to address the influx of recent arrivals in New York City. This is an important hearing, and I appreciate your finding the time to do it. New York's right to shelter is a longstanding legal obligation that makes New York City a safer, more humane place for people without a home of their own. You know the history, so I'll skip that part of my written testimony, but I do want to point this out today. The right to shelter distinguishes New York City from our peers when comparing the rate of unsheltered homelessness. Los Angeles County, which faces similar challenges with housing affordability, has an unsheltered homeless population of about 48,000. New York City, by contrast, officially 3,400, unofficially probably about double that, sleeping on the street. So, 70% of LA's homeless population lives unsheltered, less than 6% of New York's homeless population are unsheltered. Other cities, similarly, San Francisco, 57% of homeless San Franciscans unhoused, sleeping on the street. Phoenix, 56%, Las Vegas, 51%. Again, New York, 6%. That's what the right to shelter does. And let's be clear, when individuals sleep on the street instead of in shelter, they're more likely to struggle with drug addiction and untreated mental illness, more likely to remain chronically homeless, and more likely to die. That is the difference that the right to shelter makes, and I don't doubt that every single individual here in New York City, as well as in those other cities, don't want people sleeping on the streets, but eroding the right to shelter almost inevitably would lead to more of it. It is a mistake, we don't need to do it, and we should not do it. Now, to be sure, providing shelter to asylum seekers is a massive undertaking that stretches the city's financial and logistical capacity. So, we must continue to demand and work strategically to ensure that the state and federal governments step up to meet their obligations and provide their share of the funding required. As everyone agrees and knows here, the obligation under international law to provide people the opportunity to safely seek asylum is an obligation of the federal government, so we will not let up in demanding that Washington allocate the necessary resources and working strategically to make that happen. And of course, the federal government should show leadership in expanding temporary protective status and making it possible for people to achieve their work status and work authorization sooner. And at the state level, I really believe that the Adams administration is failing to seize what seems to me a fairly clear opportunity. Rather than seeking to circumvent the New York State constitutional requirement to provide safe and dignified shelter, the mayor should work with advocates to appeal to the court to clarify that the New York State right to shelter, found in the state constitution, applies to all municipalities and counties in New York State. Again, the right to shelter, it's not found in New York City law, it's found in the state constitution, so it can't only apply here. And with that alternative approach to the court on right to shelter, the other 57 counties across the state would legally share the obligation with us. At that point, the state government would surely step up with more resources, and we would have more allies in Washington as well. In the meantime, though, we can't wait for Washington and Albany. Given the urgency of the challenge, New York City must continue to move forward both prudently and compassionately. So, I want to thank both of you, and also Councilmembers Botcher, Hudson, Lee, Narcisse, Schulman, and Stevens for putting forth a thoughtful package of legislation that seeks to uphold the city's critical right to shelter, ensuring that city emergency shelters meet basic habitability requirements set forth in the Callahan Consent Decree, and that push the city to improve conditions and services across all of those fragmented shelter systems. And let's be clear, the city should, as each of you, many of you said, and was evident in Councilmember Restler's testimony, avoid creating an even further fragmented system of shelter and support services subject to different regulatory standards, managed by different city agencies, and ensure that there's a basic habitability standard and level of care for any individual and family seeking temporary refuge in our city's shelter system. Look, I have admiration for every person on the prior panel, for all of the agencies that are doing this work, and for every one of their staffs, but their personal dedication and hard work doesn't mean that it makes sense to have five separate shelter systems for asylum seekers. We need one coherent system that's pulling all our effort in a more coordinated and strategic way. Finally, but actually most urgently, we must turn our attention toward helping recent arrivals apply for asylum within one year of their arrival. Once they file that asylum application, so long as they do it within that one-year timeline, even if their hearing is not scheduled for years, they nonetheless become eligible for work authorization in six months. This is without doubt the fastest and most cost-effective way for the cities, for the city to help families seeking asylum get on their feet, become able to provide for their families, and move out of shelter. Better for them, better for the city budget. Yet, according to a recent survey by Make the Road New York, 93% of respondents have not been able to get any legal assistance or start the application process, and that's not surprising since over 99% of the city's spending on asylum seekers to date has gone for shelter and related costs like food and security, with far less than 1% on legal and support services. So, yesterday's announcement by the administration of a new effort to connect new arrivals with pro bono legal assistance is a very welcome start. Pro se clinics can empower newcomers by providing them the information on the U.S. immigration process, eligibility requirements for asylum and work authorization, and advice on how to complete relevant application forms. Again, a very welcome development. But, we must act with much more urgency and much more funding if we're actually going to rise to the challenge. If we don't act, thousands of families will go past their one-year deadline for filing their asylum applications while they're in shelter, which is to say they will go out of status and become undocumented while remaining residents of the shelter system. So, it is critical for the city council to insist that the administration add the resources necessary, $70 million, as Chair Hanif and I and others in the room have advocated, to the FY '24 budget for outreach, pro se clinics, and expanded legal services. By adequately funding both legal advice and full legal representation, the city can enable legal service providers, working in partnership with the pro bono assistance of the firms announced yesterday, to serve the widely varying needs and capacities of individuals navigating our sadly Byzantine immigration system. It will make an extraordinary difference to those families, and again, it is the best way to help people get out of the shelter system. This is not only the most, and again, without competing with other New Yorkers for housing subsidies. It is valuable to expand city FEPs for sure, but the fastest and most efficient thing we could do is help folks file their, their applications so they could get their work authorization. It's not only the most compassionate path, it is also the most cost-effective one. Thank you again to Chairs Ayala and Hanif for your leadership on these critical issues. Thank you to everyone who's working on the administration's side to meet our obligations under the right to shelter. Thank you to the advocates in the room who fought and won it and have worked tirelessly to preserve it. We look forward to continuing to partner with all of you to advocate for the resources needed to respond with the compassion and care that asylum seekers deserve, and with the competence and prudence that the crisis requires. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions for me, but thank you so much for just articulating the most important priorities pertaining to our right to shelter decree and also the funding necessary to ensure that every asylum seeker eligible is on track with their applications. And you're absolutely right, the announcement is a very welcome start, and yet we still need to work harder and put in the full investments to ensure that everyone is accounted for. So, thank you so much for-
So convenient that it's budget negotiation time when it'll be straightforward to put those resources in the budget and really be rowing together. Thank you very much for convening this hearing. It's always, always very good to be with both of you.
Thank you.
I'd like to announce that translation services in Spanish are available for anyone who needs it. If you need it, please speak to one of the sergeants. Hay servicio de traducción en español disponible? Si necesita ese servicio, por favor habla con un sargento. I will now be calling up members of the public testifying panels. All testimony will be limited to three minutes. Our first panel will consist of Chris Mann, Eric Lee, and Anthony Feliciano.
All right. Thanks so much. Good morning, everyone. Thank you to Chair Hanif and Chair Ayala, and to the esteemed members of the Committee on Immigration and General Welfare for the opportunity to submit testimony today. My name is Chris Mann, and I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy at WIN. We're the nation's largest provider of shelter and services to families with children experiencing homelessness. We operate 14 shelters in New York City and nearly 500 supportive housing units across the five boroughs. Each night, more than 6,500 people call WIN home, including 3,600 children. WIN's working daily to mitigate the worst homelessness crisis in New York City since the Great Depression, but as part of that, as part of the mayor's peg, DHS is proposing to cut the budget of nonprofit providers by 2.5%, specifically telling us to consider layoffs. These cuts would starve the very system the city relies on to manage the joint homelessness and immigration crises. We just asked today that you oppose these cuts to ensure that there's infrastructure left to implement the bills being heard today. WIN's proud to provide shelter operated by staff who are all trained in trauma-informed care, but we recognize that not all migrants in the city's care are offered that level of support. Therefore, we support INTROs 942 and 943 that set minimum standards for emergency congregate housing and require the notification of the right to be placed in a DSS shelter. WIN's also a major proponent of additional trauma-informed care trainings and mental health access, which is why we support INTROs 1084 and 1095. Further, in a recent survey of WIN clients, families reported that one of their top policy priorities would be improving the experience at PATH. We're eager to support INTRO 1072 to reduce the required housing history to one year, a change WIN has been advocating for, that would greatly reduce unnecessary barriers to shelter access. Spreading information on life-saving resources and investing in prevention will also improve outcomes for families experiencing homelessness, which is why we also support INTROs 1080, 1096, and 1064. We need innovative reforms like the ones proposed today and look forward to seeing them passed. But please, please oppose these cuts so that we have the resources needed to continue supporting families. Thank you so much. And of course, thank you again for the city FEPs bills. That's going to be a game changer for our families, and just thank you so much for your continued partnership with nonprofits and WIN.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Eric Lee. I'm Director of Policy and Planning at Homeless Services United. Thank you Deputy Speaker Ayala and Chair Hanif for holding today's hearing. I also would like to echo my extreme appreciation to the council for passing the historic city FEPs package two weeks ago. The impact of the council's heroic efforts to pass that legislation will be diluted by the mayor's 2.5% provider flexible funding peg to all DHS and, we assume, HRA contracted programs, which include shelters, street outreach, safe havens, drop-in centers, and home-based eviction prevention programs. Please join us in the fight to protect our programs and hold strong against the mayor's proposed cut to homeless services. We need the mayor to understand that the city budget shouldn't be balanced on the backs of poorest New Yorkers. The budget cut will hurt services and reduce staffing in homeless shelters across the city. DHS is already telling nonprofit providers to plan to eliminate vacancies and collapse multiple job roles into one position even before the final city budget negotiations wrap. These cuts will drive up caseloads and eliminate or reduce onsite shelter services like mental health and clinical services. The city must prioritize infrastructure and workforce investments, excuse me, for DHS, HRA, and nonprofit homeless services and eviction prevention providers in order to create a sustainable path forward for newly arrived asylum seekers as well as more established New Yorkers. The council can lead the way out of this crisis by including a 6.5% COLA for city contracted human services workers, which would enable DHS shelters and home-based prevention programs to fill vacancies and retain qualified, experienced staff. Homeless service providers are facing a starvation cycle, unable to fill vacancies due to stagnant wages, while the city proposes clawing back 2.5% from personnel lines. Regarding bills that are being considered today, HSU supports INTRO 942 to, sorry, lost my place here, to ensure that regulations for Part 941, 90491, apply to emergency congregate housing facilities. We also support INTRO 943 to provide notification of right to shelter to households entering those facilities. HSU supports INTRO 1072 to reduce the qualified shelter history requirement from two to one year for families with children in shelter, making it easier for them to prove that they are indeed homeless. We appreciate the intent of INTROs 1095 and 1096 to improve services in shelter. Reversals of the 2.5% peg and implementation of the 6.5% COLA are paramount to preserving and expanding onsite shelter services. And with regards to INTRO 1064, we do have some questions and concerns, but would like to work with the council to understand both existing data sources and ongoing oversight mechanisms to be able to get the desired outcomes that the council is seeking. But as worded, we are concerned that there might be administrative burdens for providers already struggling with data collection, but we do agree that there needs to be greater attention to the overshredged prevention home-based portfolio. To that end, we did talk with seven, a number of home-based providers which operate 17 home-based locations, and some of the things that we can share are that they have caseloads- are that they have caseloads as high as 158:1 in some of their programs, even though their actual contracted ratios average 34:1. So, the average across sites is around 94:1, but a number of them have 120 or 158:1 in one location. So, that just shows just how overstretched they are trying to flex to meet the need in the community. These home-based programs also have an average turnover rate of 43% within the last year and an average vacancy rate of 20% for their staff at the moment. And a number of them have appointments that are at least two months out for the next intake appointment, given that they just have that much demand coupled with the high vacancy and turnover rate. So, we really want to be able to work with the city to ensure that they can close the vacancies within programs by enhancing their staff lines. At the same time, the city should consider either expanding programs or opening additional sites for home-based to staff up to meet the increased need within the community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you Chair Persons Hanif and Ayala for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Anthony Feliciano. I'm Vice President for Advocacy at Housing Works. I will be brief, briefer, shorter than what I have in my testimony. Housing Works offers our full support for the initiatives to address our homeless crisis under your consideration today. And in particular, we applaud the Council for seeking to further codify the right to shelter in New York City by amending New York City Charter to establish single minimum standards for all emergency congregant housing in New York City, including the HURCs. Like most New Yorkers, we at Housing Works strongly urge the mayor to withdraw the application which seeks to undo more than 40 years of legal protections for our city's most vulnerable based on the unfounded and insupportable arguments that we can simply ignore the right to shelter requirements and anytime those in charge decide that the city lacks the resources and the capacity to provide safe and appropriate shelter. Housing Works is confident that the argument asserted by previous administrations will fail as a legal matter. What is most saddening and unacceptable is that this effort to undo fundamental right to shelter seeks to pit marginalized New Yorkers against other residents experiencing homelessness. In any event, it simply is not true that we lack the resources and capacity to meet current needs. What we lack is political will. We urge the administration council to transform the city's homeless response. As a critical first step, we call upon the mayor to sign the full council's package of comprehensive city FEPs reforms. While Mayor Adams executed order last week was write to suspend the 90-day rule for the voucher program, it has also included problematic new worker requirements for adult-only households and falls short of the council's reforms, which eliminates the rule that requires individuals to stay in a homeless shelter for 90 consecutive days before qualifying for the city FEPs housing voucher. Housing Works, on behalf of vulnerable New Yorkers, we serve and also employ the city council administration to exempt the Department of Social Services, the Department of Homeless Services, DOHMH, and community-based providers they fund from any programs to eliminate the gap, PEG, or any other cost-cutting plans. I will mention, and Ayala knows this very well, HOS is chronically understaffed and under-resourced. And both DSS and DHS face new challenges posed by the increasing number of New Yorkers experiencing homelessness, particularly communities of color and immigrant communities. And we want to make sure that that is changed. Housing Works calls for $2.5 billion in additional new construction financing each year for the first five years for apartments specifically built for homelessness and extreme low-income New Yorkers, including doubled and set aside in new affordable housing, to adopt harm reduction approaches that provide every New Yorker with safe, stable housing, including removal of police in those efforts. Housing Works is extremely pleased to work with DHS on our Mock J programs and want to continue that program and move forward. It is time to reduce the city's reliance on large congregant facilities by renewing commitment to new safe havens and single occupancy stabilization beds for on-shelter homeless individuals. A more effective homeless development must also include funding to the creation of supportive housing. I will come here short, but I will say one thing. I live on the Lower East Side and we have one of the respite centers. It is deplorable and unacceptable that in my neighborhood, someone has to walk more than four blocks to get a shower done. It is unacceptable. And to think that they can take transportation is also unacceptable. And so, that's why I believe in what you're all saying in terms of being more humane in this process and in these initiatives. The other aspect is, if we have not learned from the pandemic, I served as co-chair for the testing trace for community-based organizations the whole time during the pandemic. We not learned that having several agencies all working separately on different parts of the issue did not lead us to the recovery that we are trying to work on today. And so, again, we need to centralize and work better and work with our advocates in the community-based organizations with solutions we've been giving for several years to address the unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris, Anthony, and Eric. Deeply appreciate all the work you've been doing and also just the advocacy in support of the measures that the Council has presented. And thank you so much for raising the issues about the mayor's proposal to cut the budget of providers, which is extremely disrespectful and humiliating, particularly coming after their defense as to why they need to be more flexible and why they need to erode the city's right to shelter mandate. I mean, how does any of that? It perplexes me. It doesn't make sense, particularly because providers are going to be tasked with the resources and taking care of folks who are coming into the respite centers or the other shadow shelter facilities that the administration is creating without any oversight, without any oversight. And they are really setting a dangerous precedent for our city. And it is deeply shameful because so many providers have been really providing the dignified or demonstrating what dignity looks like for the individuals and families. And so, thank you for raising that piece in your testimony and for further standing strong with us as we move on the city FEPs voucher package, because we know that the administration is not happy about the Council using its tools, using its powers to really support our newest families and to move out families who've been warehoused for years. So, thank you so much for your continued advocacy and all of the direct service work that the organizations have taken on and the ways in which you've been working with the Council to ensure that we know what your needs are and where we need to be putting our fight forward. So, thank you. No questions for me.
Just a huge thank you from me. Thank you, guys.
Our next panel will be Janire Ortiz Herrera, Marvin Fajardo Gonzalez, Yulissa Pinto Tafur.
For our interpreter, could you share if you're going to be doing consecutive or simultaneous?
Yes. So, what I did is I got their testimony beforehand, so I translated it.
Okay, perfect.
So, they're going to read it out loud and then I'm going to read the whole version in English.
Great, thank you.
Okay, excellent. We ready to start with Janire?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Janire Ortiz. Tengo 18 años de edad, nacionalidad venezolana. Vengo a contarle un poco de mí y el porqué emigré. Como ustedes saben, mi país está pasando por una crisis humanitaria en la que hay una situación muy difícil. Basé a ello, vengo a dar mi testimonio de cómo fue mi experiencia para entrar a este país. Uno de los principales desafíos que enfrenté fue cruzar muchos países, incluyendo pasar por la selva del Darién. Esta selva es un lugar en el que te, en la que te encuentras sin salida, el cual duran muchos días dentro de ese lugar y es vivir una experiencia como entre la vida y la muerte y vivir presencias y muchas cosas feas, desgracias. Tuve que ver morir a muchas personas, ayudar a otras a cruzar ríos, montañas, faltanos. No me gustaría que las personas sigan pasando por ese lugar tan tenebroso, perdiendo sus vidas en ese lugar. Hmm, uh, sorry. El sueño americano es para valiente. No todos logramos la meta. Emigrar no es fácil. Es meter tu vida, tu sueño, y todo lo que un día fuistes en una maleta y trasladarlo a otro lugar que no es tu país y lejos de tu familia. No me gustaría que los jóvenes, me gustaría que los jóvenes salen adelante por un mejor futuro. Es algo que todos los jóvenes nos preguntamos a diario. ¿Qué será de nuestras vidas? ¿Cuál será nuestro destino si lograremos o no cumplir nuestro sueño? Me siento muy orgullosa de parte del programa de Covenant House. Ellos me han apoyado mucho. Me han hecho sentir segura. Me han ayudado con mi proceso. Gracias a ello estoy estudiando. Y estoy muy agradecida por esta oportunidad y por darme un hogar seguro. Me gustaría que el gobierno nos apoye con más recursos. Habemos muchos jóvenes emigrantes que necesitamos el permiso de trabajo y el seguro security para poder conseguir un trabajo legal. Me gustaría que nos apoyaran con cupones para alimentos, cursos vacacionales, y más apoyo de abogados gratuitos para que nuestro caso pueda ir más rápido y poder alcanzar algunas de nuestras metas.
Okay, excellent. So, this is the translated version?
Alfit. Hello, my name is Janire Ortiz. I'm 18 years old, of Venezuelan nationality. I come to tell you a little about myself and why I immigrated. As you know, my country is going through a humanitarian crisis and is facing a very difficult situation. Based on this, I came to give my testimony of how my experience was when coming to this country. One of the main challenges I faced was crossing many countries, including going through the jungle of Darién. This jungle is a place where you find yourself with no way out. I spent many days inside that place. It is a life-and-death situation. I lived and witnessed many ugly things and misfortunes. I had to see many people die. I had to help others cross rivers, mountains, and swamps. I don't want people to continue going through that dark place. The American dream is for the brave. Not everyone achieves the goal. Emigrating is not easy. It is putting your life, your dreams, and everything you wear one day in a suitcase and moving it to another place, a country far from your family. I would like other young people to thrive and have a better future. It is something that all young people ask ourselves daily. What will become of our lives? What will be our destination? Whether or not we will achieve our dreams. I feel very proud to belong to the Covenant House program. They have supported me a lot and made me feel safe. They have helped me with my process. Thanks to them, I am studying and I am very grateful for this opportunity and for giving me a safe home. I would like the government to support us with more resources. There are many young immigrants who need a work permit and social security in order to get a legal job. I would like them to support us with food stamps, vocational courses, and more support from free lawyers so that our case can move faster and be able to achieve some of our goals.
She has something else that she, is it okay if she reads it aloud? I didn't prepare that translation, but I can do it on the spot if it is not a problem.
Por último, quiero resaltar de que, de que necesitamos ayuda de personas bilingües para la ayuda de salud mental. Mientras nosotros estamos en el proceso de aprender el inglés, ya que es un tema bastante complicado, uno poder expresar, poder expresarse es complicado luego de todos los eventos traumáticos que hemos vivido. Compartirlos con unas personas que no nos comprenden, muchos, mucho nuestro idioma. Y por medio de un traductor, se debía mucho, se debía mucho la información. También he preciado como, con mis compañeros, algunas personas cercanas por falta de ayuda, por falta de poder expresarse, de no tener una oportunidad de tener un hogar estable. Con comidas calientes, se han refugiado en las calles, en el alcohol y en las drogas. Y finalmente, muchas gracias por la atención prestada.
At last, I want to point out that we need help from bilingual personnel when it comes to mental health help. We are in the process of learning English because it is a very complicated subject. To be able to express yourself is complicated after all the traumatic events that we have lived. And we share with a person that doesn't understand much about our language. Through a translator, some of the information is deviated. I have always, I have also presented how some partners and some other people, close people, because of lack of help and because they cannot express themselves, they don't have an opportunity to have a home and a hot meal. And they have found refuge in the streets, in alcohol and in drugs. Thank you very much.
Hola, mi nombre es Yulissa Pinto, de 19 años de edad, de nacionalidad colombiana, emigrante en este país. Quiero contarle un poco acerca de los desafíos que pasé en mi travesía, la ayuda que recibí del programa Covenant House, comentar un poco de las ayudas y los recursos que deseamos y se puede recibir por parte del gobierno, y mencionar sobre alguno de las personas como yo en necesidad de tutores. Por empezar, quiero decirles que realmente todo el que emigra no lo hace ni para volverse rico ni para hacerle daño a nadie. Solo quiere superación personal, salir adelante, cumplir sus sueños, y poder ayudar a su familia. Emigrar es todo un reto y en algunos casos se convierte en todo uno dice. Los desafíos más grandes que afronté en primer lugar fue empacar toda una moneta, mantarme en un avión, y en mi caso, por primera vez, y llegar a un país con muchos sueños e ilusiones y aún así sin saber qué me esperaba. Llegué por México y me entregué por frontera. Una de las peores cosas que viví fue volverme a sentir con miedo, insegura, intimidada por parte de las supuestas personas que iban a protegerme. Fui persuadida, intimidada, y robada por parte de agentes de migración mexicana y supuestos coyotes que realmente si no pagas, como por decirlo uno J... y supuestos coyotes que realmente si no pagas como por decirlo uno J, las mafias te pueden secuestrar, violar y meterte en trata de personas, entre otras cosas. Desde el momento en el que me agarró migración de Estados Unidos, pude sentirme un poco más tranquila y pude conciliar el sueño. Duré seis días en lo que se hace llamar la hielera, una capa blanca, una carpa blanca en el cual se mantiene a temperaturas muy frías. Buenos y malos tratos recibí de algunas personas en ese lugar. Luego de ahí me dirigieron a un centro de detención en Texas en el que duré un mes, en el cual para mí lo tomó como una experiencia increíble en la que compartí, viví, lloré, superé, reflexioné e hice amistad con muchas personas de otros países, en el cual nos contamos nuestras experiencias, el porqué, cómo, cuándo y todo lo que nos tocó para poder llegar hasta ese momento. Si me puedo contarle más sobre este proceso, me demoraría horas y en algún momento de mi vida prometo hacerlo. Salí de este lugar con la prueba de miedo, temor creíble y luego haber contado toda mi historia a la gente de asilo me dio mi positivo y ahí sí fue como pude ingresar a este país. Estoy muy agradecida con Covenant House, me ha ayudado bastante en mi proceso, me ha orientado, he escuchado tanto mi salud emocional y mental. Me ha ayudado con un poco los servicios legales, con clases de inglés, información sobre programas, actividades y recursos que me pueden ayudar. Hablando en temas del gobierno, les pediría que nos ayudaran un poco más en programas como Covenant House y entre otras más, con donaciones de dinero para proveedores de servicios legales en toda la ciudad, más abogados gratuitos pro bono. Con esto dejando lejona incógnita en la que quiero que ustedes oyentes reflexionen un poco y puedan entender un poco la pregunta que me hago todos los días. Mientras estoy haciendo mi proceso y envío mi caso asilo para que pueda llegar mi permiso de trabajo, mi social security, a partir de enviar la solicitud se cuentan 150 días hasta más en la espera de la llegada de este... fuera de la poca información con la que uno llega y como esperar 150 días más en la espera de este, en el cual algunos jóvenes optan por cometer infracciones a la ley y contribuye más al trabajo informal y legal y donde muchos inmigrantes nos explotan. Por último, ya por terminar, que quisieran que nos ayudaran con tutores, no tutoras, que nos ayuden financieramente... Lo siento. Financieramente, financiamente, sino que nos ayuden con un poco de orientación y acompañamiento en nuestro proceso legal. Sé que serían muchas las personas que lo harían voluntariamente. De antemano, estoy muy agradecida con la atención prestada. Ojalá mi mensaje y peticiones sean escuchadas y tomadas en cuenta. Recuerde que somos la generación del mañana, esto no es solo por mí, también es por usted y por el futuro. Muchas gracias.
Okay, prepared her testimony too. Hello, my name is Julisa Pinto, I'm 19 years old, of Colombian nationality, immigrant in this country. I want to tell you a little about the challenges that I went through on my journey, the help that I have received from the Covenant House program. I want to comment a little about the help, the resources we want and if we can receive it from the government and mention that some people like me need tutors. To begin with, I want to tell you that really everyone who emigrates does not do it to become rich or hurt anyone. They just want personal improvement, to thrive, fulfill their dreams and help their family. Immigrating is a challenge and in some cases it turns into quite an odyssey. The biggest challenges I faced in the first place: packing a suitcase, getting on a plane, in my case for the first time, and arriving in a country with many dreams, fears and illusions and even so without knowing that I was missing. I arrived through Mexico and I turned myself in at the border. One of the worst things I experienced was feeling afraid, insecure and intimidated again by the supposed people who were supposed to protect me. I was coerced, intimidated and robbed by Mexican immigration agents and so-called coyotes because really, if you don't pay a fee, so to speak, the mafias can kidnap you, rape you, put you into a human trafficking ring among other things. From the moment I was held by the United States immigration authorities, I could feel a little more calm and I was able to sleep a bit. I lasted six days in what is called la hielera, a white tent in which very cold temperatures are kept. Good and bad treatment from some people. Then, from there, they directed me to a mental health center detention in Texas in which I was detained for one month, in which for me I take it as an incredible experience in which I shared, lived, cried, overcame, reflected and made friends with many people from other countries. Telling us... We were telling each other about our experiences: why, how, when and everything that they had to go through to get to that moment. If I start to tell you more about that process, it would take me hours and at some point in my life, I will. I left this place with credible fear test after having commented all my stories to the asylum agent. They gave me the green light and that's how I was able to enter this country. I'm very grateful to Covenant House, it has helped me a lot in my process. It has guided me. Listen so much to my mental health and emotionally, it has helped me with a little bit of legal services, with English classes, information about programs, activities and resources that can help me. Speaking about the government, I would ask you to help us a little more with the programs like Covenant House and among others. Other as donating money for legal service providers throughout the city, more free lawyers pro bono. With this leaving you as an unknown in which I want you listeners to reflect a little and understand a little of the question that I ask myself every day: While I am doing my process and I submit my asylum case so that I can receive my work permit and my social security, from the day my application is approved, 150 days are counted until more waiting for that to arrive. Outside of that, one has just arrived in the country with little information and as for you to account, I have been in this country for almost four months and I'm just going through the process of sending my asylum application plus six months of waiting in which it takes time for the documents to arrive. It takes a long time. In which some young people choose to commit infractions of the law and contribute to more informal illegal work and where many immigrants are exploited. Finally, and to finish, I would like to help... I would like you to help us with tutors. Tutors not to help us financially, if not to help us with a little guidance and support in our legal process. I know that there would be many people who would do it voluntarily. In advance, I am very grateful for the attention provided. I hope my message and requests are heard and taken into account. Remember that we are the generation of tomorrow and this is for me, for you and for the future. Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias. Yo soy la concejal Diana Ayala y quería dirigirme a ustedes un momentito porque tengo que salir a una prensa que tenemos afuera. Pero quería, en primer lugar, decirles que soy muy orgullosa de ustedes y pedirles las gracias por estar aquí hoy y usar su voz para representar a todas las familias y a todas las personas jóvenes que han venido y han cruzado hacia los Estados Unidos. Yo sé que... y me puedo imaginar lo difícil que fue ese proceso y lo difícil que sigue siendo ese proceso porque no es algo que uno olvida, ¿verdad? El trauma de tener que dejar familia, de tener que dejar su país es bien difícil y yo lo entiendo. Y quiero que sepa que estoy muy orgullosa de ustedes y tengo mucha fe que todo le va a resolver bien bonito a ustedes. Quiero ofrecerle también, este, mi oficina. En mi oficina pueden... Nosotros con mucho gusto, con mucho amor y cariño las recibimos y quisieran a todos venir y aprender, ¿verdad? Un poquito de Nueva York, de las leyes, de cómo nosotros trabajamos también para poder, este, ¿cómo se dice? Tener un poquito, darle un poquito de experiencia, ¿verdad?, de exposición para poder cualificar para otros trabajos cuando le lleguen los certificados de la visa de trabajo. Yo sé que el tiempo se hace largo cuando no hay mucho que hacer, pero Covenant House es un programa muy bueno y tengo fe y confianza que ellos le van a ayudar a darle también todos los recursos que necesitan. Pero ustedes son bien valientes y lo que han hecho hoy aquí es darle voz a todas las personas que no la tienen todavía, no la han encontrado. Só quiero darle las gracias por eso. Y mucha pena que tengo que salir, pero quería por lo menos dejarles saber eso y con confianza, si quisieran ir a nuestra oficina y yo le enseño a hacer de todo un poco para que sí cuando le toque el momento de ir a trabajar tengan toda la experiencia y puedan poner su primera experiencia laboral como la oficina de la concejal Diana Ayala. Así que con mucho gusto.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You want me to translate that?
Nah. This is gonna be a hard one.
Well, Shana didn't understand. What I was just basically just saying how proud I am of them and how brave they are to be here today to lend a voice to all of those individuals that are not able to be here today and have yet not found their voice. I know that what they went through, I can only imagine, was very difficult and traumatizing and will continue to be for a really long time. But I appreciate that they took the time to be here today and I also offered my office as a place that they can come and, you know, volunteer their time. We can help, you know, offer them the work skills that they need so that when that work visa comes in, they can list our office as their first place of work here in the United States. And, you know, basically just, I have to step out because I have a press event across the street, but I want to thank you all as well for being here and council member, honey, for being, you know, such a great advocate. Muchísimas gracias.
Hello, council members. My name is Marvin Stephen. I'm 20 years old and today I come to testify my story. I came to the United States one year ago. I had the privilege of arriving in this country by plane. And I say privilege because many people do not have that same opportunity. The United States is a country full of opportunities. However, the difficulties that many young people, children and families go through to enter this country are more than inhuman. From extortion, robbery, humiliation, discrimination, to murder, rape, kidnapping and torture. There's... These are some of the many things that immigrants who decide to come to this country have to live with. I have met several friends who have crossed the border. Many of them embarked on their journey from South America, crossing from country to country, either by bus, hiding in cars, or sneaking through the jungle. The vulnerability of these people is very high since they are exposed to the unknown and they are very bad people who take advantage of this and commit serious human rights violations. A 20-year-old boy, I met him in Covenant. He told me how armored and hooded men tied him up in the jungle and raped the women in front of him. Moments later, the Panamanian Border Army arrived and they confront each other with shoots. Thank God my friends come out unharmed. That and many other horrible things happened in the jungle and all with the hope of reaching American soil. I thank Covenant House and all the staff of Covenant House for helping me and help many young people. And I would like to make a call to please help organizations such as Covenant House that helps many young people to have a place to sleep, IF and many other aid that this type of organization offers us which allow us to revive the hope of a better future for the society. Thank you, council members.
Thank you so much to the three of you for joining us at today's vitally important hearing. We have been waiting to get some of these important bills heard and you were present for the administration's remarks and responses to our very tough questions, which we had not been getting clarity around for many, many weeks. But you'll notice that no one from the administration is here to listen to your stories and your experiences. And that speaks volumes to me. Like Deputy Speaker Ayala, I am just proud. I am proud that you, despite the obstacles and having seen the violent terrain along the way, that New York City was the destination for hope. That New York City was the destination for you to have a dignified life. That New York City will be where you will become our next set of leaders on this side of the dais. And that's the hope that this city offers. And that is why we are so urgently in opposition of this mayor's attempt to pull away some of the vital protections that have been in this city for decades. What he is doing is unprecedented, it is dangerous, and we will not allow it. And so I thank you for testifying because this is such an important part of our fight. And you must keep fighting. It is unfortunate that even after arriving here that you will need to continue fighting to ensure that the protections that are here for New Yorkers remain and that our continued fight will be to strengthen these protections, to make more protections to ensure safety and dignity. So I thank you for bringing your experience as young people who deserve abundant joy and the radical hope because this city offers that. This city offers that to all of us. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
And a big shout out to, of course, Covenant House. We see your work, we see the impact. We see the impact. And echo some of the calls that you've made around services that are in the languages you are most comfortable with. And from everything, from vocational training to employment, opportunities to mental health services, absolutely, our advocacy has been rooted in language access and Covenant House has been a part of making sure that we expand.
Okay, well, she says that it would be great if they had more time to testify and to share their experience.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because it's very good.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Okay, and I want to thank someone that is here in the back.
A la señora Adama, que cuando recién llegué...
La señora quién?
Adama.
Adama. I want to thank Adama, who was the first person who directed me to Covenant. And thanks to her.
Me abrió muchas puertas y me ayudó mucho en mi proceso.
Well, she opened a lot of doors for me and helped me a lot in my process.
Absolutely. We love Sister Adama and... And what is so beautiful about the ways in which this city is showing up is that irrespective of our faith, of our racial diversity, we want to make sure that every single newcomer has the same protections as every New Yorker, irrespective of their immigration status. I'm our city's first Muslim woman in the city council and to see a black Muslim woman lead on our immigration reform fight is tremendously powerful and remarkable. And that's the kind of solidarity and collective advocacy and organizing we need. It can't simply just be that the Muslim community is fighting for its own issues, that the Latinx community is fighting for its own issues. We have to bring these issues together and show up for our fights. And so when I see Sister Adama welcoming asylum seekers at every corner of our city, that's what I see, the hope that our communities show up for one another. Thank you.
Gracias.
Our next panel will be a virtual panel. Once your name is called, the member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin your testimony once Sergeant at Arms sets the clock and gives you the cue. This panel will consist of Deborah Berkman, followed by Meda Ghosh, followed by Beth Harles, followed by Chaplain Mandy Cohen.
Should I start?
Yes.
Thanks very much. Chair Hanif, council members and staff, good afternoon, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Deborah Berkman, and I'm the supervising attorney of the Shelter Advocacy Initiative and the Public Assistance and SNAP Practice at the New York Legal Assistance Group, or NILAG. NILAG enthusiastically supports all the bills being heard today, and we will submit written testimony on each bill, but I want to focus on two bills that have had a little bit less testimony. First, I'd like to discuss Intro 1072. These reforms to the eligibility process for DHS, or Department of Homeless Services, family shelter are essential. In New York City, the current application process for family shelter is unnecessarily onerous and burdensome. When a homeless family with children finds themselves in need of shelter, they must present in person for intake at DHS's PATH intake center in the Bronx. While there, the family must provide a complete history of all the places they have lived for the last two years, as well as third-party contacts or documentary evidence to verify that the family actually lived at those locations. Families must even provide proof for periods of street homelessness. The family is then given a pre-investigative emergency 10-day placement while DHS attempts to, again, verify the provided housing history. If the verification contacts provided don't answer the phone, or if DHS cannot speak with them within 10 days, then the family is found ineligible for shelter, and the family must pack up their belongings, leave their shelter placement, and reapply for shelter. Reapplying for shelter entails starting the entire process from the beginning by having the family return to PATH, spend another 10 to 20 hours completing a new application for shelter, typically identical to the one that they just did, and then waiting on-site for a new temporary shelter placement. While this practice has been briefly paused during COVID, DHS has indicated that it is going to begin this, this process of reapplying in person very shortly. But for now, all reapplications should be occurring over the telephone. But because reapplying generally can take up to 20 hours, applicants who need shelter are forced to miss work and keep their children home from school, since there's no way for a family to know whether they will be done in time to actually pick their children up from school. Once they have reapplied, the family is provided generally with a new 10-day temporary placement while they wait for their reapplication to be reviewed, but that placement may not be in the same location as their prior temporary placement. Since many families have to repeat this scenario every 10 days, it's nearly impossible for any family to plan commutes to school, work, and daycare. Some NILAG clients in this circumstance have been subject to ACS investigations based on educational neglect, because their children weren't able to attend school on a consistent basis, consistent basis, excuse me, both because they had to spend one out of every 10 days in the PATH office, and because they were then assigned to a different location with no way to get to their current school. Also, families who are deemed ineligible for shelter are not eligible for the programs that assist homeless families transition to permanent housing, particularly the City PEPs Rental Assistance Program. Right, just briefly finish. The problem is extremely vast, and most applications for family shelter are denied. In fact, in April of 2023, only 39% of families who presented themselves as homeless were deemed eligible. Intro 1072 is a great first step to reform the process. However, these changes don't go far enough. Further legislation must be proposed, mandating that in cases where clients are unable to provide documentary evidence or third-party witnesses to verify their housing, they should be permitted to self-attest to their residence at that location. Or, even more logically, when a family presents and says they are homeless, the city can choose to simply believe them without subjecting them to an extensive fraud investigation to prove homelessness. Just very briefly, I also want to weigh in on Intro 1096, because public benefits, eligibility specialists, and shelter are key to transitioning to all permanent housing. It is very difficult to transition out of shelter without public benefits or a rental subsidy, which is itself a public benefit. Shelter staff, caseworkers, and sometimes even housing specialists don't understand shelter residents' eligibility, particularly when those applicants are immigrants. Immigrant eligibility for public benefits is very misunderstood. So having a benefits eligible, benefits expert in shelter is critical to transitioning to permanent housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Meda Ghosh.
Starting time.
Chair Yala and Hanif, thank you so much for holding this hearing and providing this opportunity to testify. My name is Meda Ghosh, and I'm the Senior Policy Coordinator for Health at CACF, the Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. As asylees, refugees, and migrants resettle to New York City, they carry with them an immense amount of trauma from the violent experiences of being forced to leave their homes. The city must work to ensure that asylum seekers can feel as safe as possible as they adjust to their life here. This is why CACF is in full support of Intro Bill 1095, that would require at least one mental health coordinator at any location where refugees, asylees, and migrants receive services from city agencies or providers upon their arrival in the city, as well as Intro Bill 1084, that would require the DHH to develop a training on trauma-informed care and afford to those serving refugees, asylees, and migrants. As migrants navigate the city's healthcare system, and in particular, mental healthcare system, it is crucial that their care is trauma-informed, culturally responsive, and linguistically accessible. In addition to our support of Intro Bill 1095 and 1084, we recommend the following: increase the number of languages for translated signage and forms, and ensure accuracy of translation by engaging community partners in a translation review; invest in community-led and community-based language accessible and culturally responsive mental health resources; and prioritize the recruitment and retention of multilingual mental health care professionals to ensure high-quality care. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Harles.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Harulis. I'm a senior staff attorney at the New York Civil Liberties Union. We are here today to defend New York City's longstanding commitment to the right to shelter, objective plan, budget cuts to the critical services actually designed to reduce homelessness, and oppose any attempt by the city or its mayor to scapegoat recently arrived migrants as a cause for undermining the city's long tradition of offering shelter to those in need. This council must ensure that the human rights of unhoused persons, whether longstanding New Yorkers or recent migrants seeking shelter here, are respected. Since the Great Depression, the New York State Constitution has committed the city to providing aid, care, and support of the needy as a legal mandate. In a city of New York's size and values, meeting the needs of our underprivileged community members should be a moral imperative. Unfortunately, the eight bills on today's agenda, like the proposed city budget and the mayor's blueprint for reducing homelessness, falls well short of the vision and priority needed to actually address a worsening economic and human rights crisis. The city's continued practice of using the police as the default response to nearly every, every social issue has meant the defunding of New York's accessible housing opportunities, public health infrastructure, social safety net, educational services, and other vital services that enable communities to truly thrive. These bills fail to exercise the power the council possesses to redress these longstanding funding failures, and the NYCLU regrettably cannot support them. Our testimony identifies some specific problematic aspects of the bills presented as well. Today's bills, as well-meaning as they are, effectively are equivalent to the storied exercise of rearranging dectures on the Titanic. Neither the mayor nor the council have any coordinated holistic plan for housing services or supports for unhoused New Yorkers, whether they are longtime residents of the city or more recent arrivals, such as the migrants and asylum seekers who have arrived in New York City, adding stress to the city's already inadequate shelter system. Homelessness is not a new issue. Mayor Adams has failed to address and made worse the plight of unhoused New Yorkers. He has deployed NYPD to sweep away unhoused people from the streets and subways, has tried to consign unknown numbers, numbers of unhoused New Yorkers to force treatment. Psychiatric hospitalization has failed to address the affordable housing crisis, has issued his own counterproductive emergency rules, amending the City PEPs Rental Assistance Housing Program, has defunded the accessible housing opportunities, and now attempts to consign thousands of New Yorkers into the gutter by seeking to undermine the Callahan right to shelter. There is much more work the council could do to ensure a dedication of resources. We heard today about a capacity issue confronting the city. We urge the speaker and council to exercise its oversight to redress the fact there are enough vacant apartments in the city's public and supportive housing system to accommodate 15,000 people. These empty units across the two systems combined could and should be used to transition homeless New Yorkers out of shelter and into the empty apartments, creating capacity for migrants in asylum shelters. Budgets are moral documents. When it comes to the New York City's fiscal footprint, the budget is the opportunity to imagine the city.
Time expired.
The current fiscal plan and the bills proposed today are inadequate to meet that challenge. We will be submitting more extensive written testimony through the city council's portal today, addressing both the Callahan issues, as well as, I noted, providing specific comments on the proposed bills. Thank you so much for having this hearing. We stand ready, as we always do, to assist the council in improving the lives of all New Yorkers.
Thank you all so much. We deeply appreciate your partnership and the tireless effort to ensure that our city remains a sanctuary city. Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. Our next panel will be an in-person panel. It will consist of Hildan Colón Hernández, Dr. X Rivera, Adama Ba, and Par Malu.
We will be reading your testimonies, so I would like to ask you all to keep your testimonies to the three-minute on the clock. Thank you.
Good. Can I start?
Go first.
Good afternoon. My name is Hildan Colón, and I'm the deputy director of NICE. We are an organization that actually receives asylum seekers with a satellite office. Some of the stories that we hear, actually, we hear is time 1,000. That's approximately how many people we receive in a given month that are coming in to the city. So I understand some of the youth that was here. We hear from their parents, their grandparents, their uncles. We are here to support the bills that are in the, what have been mentioned as the minimum standard that should apply to these circumstances, for many reasons, because this is what the basic is going to help with many immigrants to start. They come from zero. So if we don't have a minimum standards that will help them to settle, that it's going to make things impossible. What I want to bring, something that probably have not been mentioned, is the reality of many of these immigrants will not qualify for asylum. We don't want to talk about that, but that's the reality. So some of the legislation that we're putting in place, and to keep the minimum, will help them in the process for a future that may not qualify for some people for asylum, but kind of like provide them probably a space for others that are coming through. And I know that's something that a lot of people are not talking about, what we are preparing for. And the other aspect is, a lot of them, they want to get out of the shelter system, some people, but we need to invest in workforce developments, because even that they have a temporary status, social security, they don't have the skills, they will not be able to find a job. If not, they will end up in construction, and they will end up in industry where they'll be exploited. They do have a social security, but they're not getting paid. They basically, they're not paying in overtime. They're not actually qualifying. They probably end up in accidents, or even in fatalities, as we saw a couple of years ago, where 21 people die in the construction industry. And I don't think we want to go for that. I think it has to be a comprehensive conversation, and I think that is the realities that I think some of the administrations are, I think are not looking, and I understand there's limited resources. But if we don't add this to the conversation, we're going to end up in the same place a couple of years from now, dealing with the aftermath of how some of these things will manifest. And what I will say, which is very different, the immigrant profile coming in has changed. Usually, before, we used to see single men. That's not the reality. We're seeing, what, more women, more people with families, right? So the, this multiplying effect will have a long-term issue about it. We want to work with the city. The people are already in shelters. They should communicate, work with us, especially in Queens, that we have the majority of the shelters. The city have not have reached out to be like, hey, come to the shelter, give them a presentation, put them in the courses. And I think many of the nonprofits are willing to do that with the city, the simple steps that I think that they can take forward. Thank you.
My name is Adama Ba, and I have been actively involved in supporting newly arrived migrants in New York City. Together with my colleague Par Malu and our team, we greet arriving buses, arrange transportation for people arriving at airports and all ports of entry, and ensure they receive the assistance they need. In the past year, we've helped thousands of people from all over the world who were stranded without proper planning from the city. Having personally gone through the asylum-seeking process, I'm well aware of the challenges migrants faced when navigating a system that wasn't designed for them. Currently, my focus is on helping these migrants overcome these challenges. I would like to emphasize a few key points: the lack of communication, the absence of expertise, and the wasting of million dollars, and the failure to acknowledge other ethnic groups in this migrant crisis. The city needs to step up. Despite limited funding, I have managed to support thousands of migrants. Let's begin discussing the shelter. The HERC model has proven to be effective for migrants and can serve, can serve as an example for service provided for our homeless population. With the exceptions of locations like the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal and the respite centers, which are inhumane, it seems the city intentionally makes it difficult to provide housing for migrants, perhaps in the hope of discouraging them from coming to NYC. However, migrants have been coming to New York City for decades, and they will continue to do so. By providing better support for their resettlement, we can alleviate the struggles we currently face. Unfortunately, on May 19th, the city abruptly shut down the service center at Port Authority without giving us a fair warning or providing alternative site for us to continue the social service. The city refuses to address important issues related to DHS, HRA, and reunification of families separated at the border, among other concerns. This has made it much more difficult for us to advocate for migrants, and we have been informed that we are not welcome at HERC sites. The current services are less responsive to people's need. Families are being separated because the city does not extend families together. There is a concerning situation where 18 to 21 years old are housed with adults despite having shelter options for young adults. Furthermore, the OWEM respite sites are housing men and women together without any privacy, negatively affecting our trans and LGBTQ migrants and Muslim community. It is crucial to have onsite advocates to oversee and address these issues. Religious concerns are not being adequately addressed, and we need council to compel the mayor's office to allow advocates onsite to oversee how migrants are being treated. It is easy to take advantage of people who are unaware of their rights. The majority of social services are primarily catered to Hispanic migrants while not meeting the needs of Black, white, Asian, and many other ethnic groups. We are more than willing to work alongside with the city to address this crisis. But when they attempt to take away the right to shelter, it affects not just migrants, but everyday New Yorkers in need of shelter. The mayor's office has been implementing policies and cutting budget while blaming the immigrant community. The only crisis we truly are facing is the one failed communication and support on the ones, those on the ground.
Good afternoon. Protocol already being established. I do want to thank everybody on the council for their time today. I'm Dr. Zalexa Rivera. I'm the chief program officer at Bronx Parent Housing Network. I want to let everybody know that Bronx Parent Housing Network is one of the providers that assisted New York City with the expansion of opening commercial hotels in New York City. I currently have approximately 3,500 asylum seekers I currently have approximately thirty-five hundred asylum seekers since expanding as of August, offering them services, wraparound services, but it's more solution-focused, which is slightly different. So we tried to address all of their needs, trying to find community resources, legal services, food and nutrition services, HIV AIDS services, subsidy services to try to offset some of their concerns. Being with the time restraint, I do want to start or go off more on the recommendations that I wanted to talk about, because it does highlight most of the things, if not all, that other persons have said prior to. We would like to encourage the administration to use this moment as opportunity to address both crises, one being the asylum seeker crises, but also acknowledging that there are New Yorkers that are also facing homelessness as well. Both strategies must coexist if we truly want to create a more equitable and better future of New York City. We would like to emphasize that addressing the homelessness crisis is not just about providing individuals with a place to stay. It is also about providing them tools and resources that they can have a home and exit shelter without recidivism. We want to applaud the mayor for launching the Promise NYC in January of 2023 that provides undocumented families with access to childcare services in partnership with community-based organizations. This critical response benefited more than seven hundred children, but unfortunately, it does expire by the end of this month. Therefore, exposing the, or resurfacing this challenge for undocumented families who rely on childcare to work, please acknowledge that the shelter system does not allow for childcare or babysitting services while in the shelter. Therefore, it limits your ability to service them or allow your client to get employment to then offset their services. So I appreciate the council's commitment to providing shelter to individuals facing homeless insecurity. We continue to partner with community leaders, government, and stakeholders to combat this crisis. In the report, you'll notice that we do agree with two of the legislations, but I did want to go on record to say I want to continue to support New York City in this effort, but there are some things that we need to identify as ways or strategies to assist those persons who are in need of resources. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Par Malu. I'm the executive director of artists, athletes, activists. And first, I want to shout out this city council for all its hard work in supporting and echoing the calls to action from people on the ground, organizations that have been on the front lines. And you guys have taken bold steps to push for new bills to be passed, especially around the shelter issues that the unhoused community has faced since before the migrants arrived. Also, shout out to the founding members of the National Community Organizers Day, which has been designated, co-signed by numerous community leaders to take effect annually, beginning today. Port Authority was used as the intake center for over nine months. We were there to bridge the gap and connect the dots. There are things that advocates can do that staff members cannot do. This is how we were able to help so many families in real time, so many unaccompanied minors, LGBTQIA+ community members, and women that were violated on their journey here or even once arriving to the States, and they were uncomfortable sharing that with us. At Port Authority, we began providing services to migrants and continue to do so with our twenty-four-seven mobile help desk, where we do case management and follow-ups, including but not limited to accompanying new moms or new moms-to-be to their appointments and making sure they have essentials for the baby, as well as getting the proper food to promote nursing. The mayor has asked us all to step up, and that is exactly what we've been doing, even when faced with pushback, which we're not clear where exactly it stems from, but it happened so suddenly from one day to the next when Port Authority shut down. Since the move from Port Authority, we are still greeting and welcoming buses, even though we were told we're not welcome to be at the arrival center and you're not welcome to greet the buses anymore. We actually get intel from grassroots orgs on the ground, letting us know when the buses are heading to our city, so we make sure we're there so we can welcome the families with dignity. We continue to advocate for migrants to make sure that they are following up with their appointments, getting their IDs, including driver's license, and meeting with lawyers and paralegals to support asylum applications. It's just way more difficult when we have to do double work to find the families as opposed to before, when they knew where to find us. It's time we unify our city and stop the divisive tactics being deployed, making the migrants feel like they are enemies of the unhoused community. After further review, here's what we can do. Pass nine forty-two. Minimum standards is absolutely necessary. We've been told that the respite sites are temporary. However, we have cases of several weeks and up to a month where people have been there with still no movement and no site for transfers. These places are horrific. If minimum standards are in place, we wouldn't have showerless locations where clients had to go days without showering. And it wasn't until some pressure was applied by advocates that they came up with a solution. Not a good solution, but a solution. We have migrants practically on top of each other, being treated as if they are in a third-world country. This is New York City, and we need to do better. How can you treat people so inhumanely, piling them up and packing them in like sardines? There are no right-to-shelter rules that apply to these respite sites, and so they pretty much get away with mistreating the people. When you have a mass of people trying to overcome traumatic experiences without mental health support and no personal space, things can get hectic after being in such an environment for a while. You're not allowing them privacy to grieve for the ones they left behind or for the ones that have been detained and the ones that have lost their lives along the journey. These emotions all get bottled inside and with no real outlets become triggered when faced with aggression and dismissive behavior by those staff members tasked with assisting them. We've had many of the asylees break down weeping as they express what they're going through. The asylees compare these respite sites to detention centers in Mexico and when they cross the border. We're all for ten eighty-four. In relation to creating training on trauma-informed care for persons serving refugees, asylees, and migrants, all mass hiring going on in these facilities has yet to take into account training staff on the importance of checking their attitudes and behavior to reflect more empathy and more patience. We get calls all the time about how staff members at the shelters yell at migrants and are either not willing or knowledgeable to disseminate correct information. Where is the ample training of these staff members? I've said this all along. The crisis was not when the buses were coming into the city. We, the grassroots orgs, stepped up in a major way to pick up the pieces, fill in the gaps and the gaping holes while buses were coming in droves last year. Then we had a break from the buses for a couple of months. During this time, there should have been more collaboration, communication, and cooperation between the city and grassroots orgs on the ground. There was anticipation of Title Forty-two getting lifted for months. The word that was spread across the city was that there was going to be an influx of migrants once it was lifted. We have not seen that influx. The numbers are way less than when Title Forty-two was in effect. The migrants are being blamed for everything that's been going wrong with the system before they arrived. The crisis is when the grassroots orgs and advocates are not taken seriously and our hard work and solutions are disregarded to later have them attempt to implement with the wrong personnel. The crisis is in the miscommunication or the lack thereof between agencies tasked with setting up staff to help this population. And I'll end it there, but I'll submit my testimony later on.
Thank you so much. And of course, I hate to cut folks off, but we've got other hearings and other meetings that we need to get to. But deeply appreciate your patience. I know you've been here since the administration's testimonies and the back and forth that we engaged in, so deeply, deeply appreciate you taking the time off to be here. Thank you so much to Hildanin from NICE, Adama and Par Malu, and Dr. Rivera. We deeply appreciate all the ways in which you've demonstrated the power and strength of New Yorkers who are committed to ensuring that our immigrant communities know that this is their home. And Adama, thank you for the perspective of lifting up the folks who have not been accounted for in these conversations. And I know that in the conversations we've had about asylum seekers being moved to other parts of the state, are Black asylum seekers, and though, and they've been sort of taken into the, into an ethos in municipalities that have no protections. And we know that at the intersections of being Black, being an immigrant, asylum seeker, not having the language capacities, these folks are the most vulnerable and precarious in whatever sector of work they go into and in every institution that they'll be navigating as they figure out what their life in the state looks like. So thanks first and foremost for, in every conversation we've had, and I've heard you speak in so many places, just reminding us of what the full picture of asylum seekers or our newest New Yorkers look like. And I know that in particular about, particularly about the folks who are Muslim have not had the, and continue to not have the halal food options in shelters or the place to pray in peace and that our faith-based institutions have had to pick up and make makeshift shelter and housing and needing to ask the community to participate in a food train and provide meals per meal for the day. And while that's really noble and remarkable of our community, that is not a sustainable system. And there should be no reason why we are segregating Black Muslims away from, or Black asylum seekers away from the existing infrastructure. I'm really glad also that in your testimonies, you've highlighted just the, just how deplorable the respite centers are and why we need to really push against this mayor's rhetoric around eroding the right-to-shelter decree and why we need to have minimum standards. There's absolutely no reason why in the richest city in the world that there are people needing to walk out, walk four blocks, or figure out a transportation to take a shower? That, that, I'm perplexed by that. And, and so, thank you. Just, I hope that in your continued work with asylum seekers, individuals, and families, that these are the conversations you will continue to have and, and that the council has their back. Dr. Rivera, thank you so much for raising the Promise NYC program. This council fought really hard with our comptroller to deliver the ten million, and we are proud that the administration did so. But to see that it hasn't been reinstated, renewed, is really disappointing. And the council is actually calling for a doubling of that funding to really meet the needs of many folks who were not able to garner the services. And you're absolutely right. With facilities that don't have childcare options, that don't have after-school programming or sort of other activities, we need to make sure that folks who are now working, parents that are, that are now working, have access to childcare opportunities and, and good quality childcare opportunities. And at a hearing last week, which we hosted jointly with the Women in Gender Equity with Councilmember Tiffany Caban, we heard from countless mothers who were just like, this was about my own independence and confidence while also being able to work and also knowing that my child was in good hands and had nutritious meals and learned healthy habits and was also in a space for healing. And so the benefits are abundant, and so we need to be redirecting our resources to the programs that work. And the administration has said, this is something that works, and we are proud of this program. So we call on the administration again in renewing and doubling Promise NYC because of the countless, countless benefits. And just in closing, it is still quite baffling to me that Adama, Par Malu, and others were told you can't welcome asylum seekers. That is just outrageous, that you can't welcome asylum seekers or you can't welcome them here, or the blame and the rhetoric that because you all have been so welcoming, asylum seekers are coming to our city. I mean, none of that demonstrates the values of our democracy in New York City. And it is quite shameful that the mayor has had to turn to that kind of, that kind of a narrative to pit communities against one another. And I'm really proud that all the advocates here have not fallen for that trap, that one community is greater than other, another, that in fact, we need to be calling for these services for all the folks who need them. And to your point, for there to be a strategy that doesn't say, that doesn't exclude current New Yorkers from the conversation. And so deeply admire your work. Thank you so much for testifying and showing up all the time, every single day. I know that you are not thanked enough, so I want to make sure that you, you hear from me directly. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Pedro Zambrano.
Hello again, council members. So Mr. Pedro and I prepared his testimony, so I'm going to do consecutive interpretation. He told me a story that we believe you should hear for sure. Señor Pedro.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Saludo a todos ustedes.
Greetings to you all.
A todas las personas que están aquí en este salón.
People that are here in this room.
Y me dirijo ustedes de lo que me aconteció a mí en el terminal de Cruel.
I want to talk to you about what happened to me in.
¿Cómo se llama de nuevo el sitio en Brooklyn?
En, terminal de cruceros.
I'm cruise terminal, cruise terminal in Brooklyn?
In Red Hook.
In Red Hook.
Este, esa noche yo.
That night.
Venía de una reunión.
I came from a gathering, from an English class.
Fui a tomar un café.
And I was drinking some coffee.
Y me sentí un poco mal del estómago.
I felt a little bad in my stomach.
Fui al lugar del baño.
So I went to the restroom.
Al momento de llegar al baño.
And the moment I got there.
De buscar un lugar, un espacio.
I was trying to look for a space.
Al baño de las damas.
So I had to go to the women's restroom, and I found.
Observé una persona que estaba mirándome.
I saw a person that was looking at me.
A lo que levantó la mirada, lo veo que estaba colgado.
I saw that this person was hanging and was purple.
Para morir.
This person was about to die.
Afección mecánica.
Via mechanical asphyxiation, strangulation.
Salí en el momento, di tres pasos, pedí ayuda a la seguridad y a las personas que estaban ahí.
To the people that were there to come to the place.
En el lugar de entrada de una vez, patié la puerta.
And I kicked the door open. I grabbed this person by the legs. I suspended him up.
Dos personas me ayudaron, estaban en los water.
They climbed on the toilets. We were able to unloose the noose.
Porque el cordón es muy fuerte. El nudo lo hizo de manera que no se podía afar.
He did the noose in a way that you cannot untie it.
Abrílo y sacalo.
So we had to open it and then pull him out where he got his head.
Si yo no llego en ese momento, tres, cuatro segundos, ese muchacho se muere.
In that precise moment, in three or four seconds, this person would have died.
Ese muchacho lo llevaron a un hospital luego.
This guy was taken to a hospital later on.
Lo llevaron a un hospital luego y fue recluido.
And he.
Tratamiento psicológico.
And he was put into psychological treatment.
Por la tentativa consumida, porque una persona psicológicamente está bien.
Of course, psychologically, this person is not fine when you make an attempt on your own life.
Y luego ellos les di a la compañía que nos ubican ahí, que es Dugo.
The company that takes care of us was, ¿cuál es el nombre de la compañía?
Dugo.
¿Dugo?
Dugo, que ellos nos dan, cuidan de nosotros.
That's the company that takes care of us. They give us cards, the metro cards.
Lo que está en la parte social, en la parte de los delón.
Social part.
De la atención completa y general de la chester.
General attention that they give us in the shelter.
Y entonces yo me ofrecieron a mí de que sí, que me iban a apoyar con un reporte.
So they told me that they were going to help me.
Para tener un reporte sobre lo que sucedió esa noche.
So I could have a report of what happened that night.
Nunca lo hicieron.
And they never did.
Nunca lo hicieron, ni por aquí, de esta compañía de Dugo, ni la compañía de Seguridad que estaba esa noche ahí.
Not this company, Dugo, not the security company that was working that night.
Que están en Jefferson.
They're in Jefferson here in Brooklyn.
Entonces, me sentí como burlado en la palabra que una foto grave que los americanos siempre toman su palabra.
Joke me, because you always trust the words of the Americans.
Fue tomado como por engaño. Decían, sí, te vamos a hacer esto, y a la final no te dieron nada.
Yes, yeah, we're going to do this for you, but at the end of the day, they didn't do anything for me.
Y otra cosa que tienen que tratar mejor al emigrante.
They need to treat the immigrants better.
Hay varias veces que luego de mi seguridad, ese tipo de seguridad de Brooklyn.
People from security, like this security people in Brooklyn, they're, some people are well behaved. But I know about. Some people are well behaved, but I know about... Other places in which they have people that are not supposed to be in these charges.
No tiene buenas relaciones humanas así con...
Human relations with...
Entiende, la forma como hablan a uno, fuerte tal, uno tolera y pasa la página.
You tolerate it and you just pass the page.
Y otra cosa que se ha habido mucho en este caso de Brooklyn.
Has been heard a lot in this case about Brooklyn.
Los problemas ahí se relacionaban en los baños también, los problemas de las religiones, ¿verdad? Los musulmanes tienen sus costumbres, como los católicos también tenemos nuestros costumbres.
Muslims have their customs and Catholics, we have our customs.
Muchos se molestaban por el uso de los baños.
A lot of people got very angry because of the usage of the restrooms. They wanted to have their own place to do their thing and everything is mixed up.
Ellos tienen que tener su lugar.
So they need to have their own place and it is true.
Porque se creaba mucha incomodidad con eso, mucha gente se molestaba.
We were very uncomfortable with that and a lot of people got angry. I respect everybody's religion.
Otra cosa que...
Another thing is...
En el refugio donde estoy ahora.
In the shelter where I'm at right now, in that shelter, I was there for six days with the lights turned on.
Me causaron un trauma del sistema nervioso.
And this caused a nervous system trauma. A lot of stress, I told them, "Turn off the lights, turn off the lights, I will unplug the cable myself, whatever."
Vamos a esperar al ingeniero que venga, el ingeniero que se siga.
They said, "Oh, we're gonna look for the engineers so he can come." So six days later, my pressure was in 590, the valleys were very high.
Y la comida es muy dulce, en el caso mío, se elevó la glicemia.
In my case, my glycemic levels went up.
Demasiado dulce.
It's too sweet.
Un médico nutricionista que creo que va a mejorar la calidad de nutrición.
Improve the quality of the nutrition because the food is too sweet and we're not used to that.
Y bueno, le digo que por favor nos tomen más en cuenta porque yo hoy vi un caso de una muchacha
Take us into consideration because I know of a case about a girl. There was this girl sleeping in the street because she didn't have a place to go, she didn't have a shelter.
Entonces, eso es lo que le quería decirle.
That's what I wanted to tell you.
Sobre que las cosas las proveen y no las cumplen.
People promise things, but they never fulfill their promises and as an immigrant, it is very difficult to thrive here because that's the key that opens the doors to success. So it is very difficult for us to take that little step. We know that everything has its legal process.
Pero tenemos que tener un poco más de...
We need to have more...
Buscar la manera de cómo solucionar eso.
Need to find a way to solve this as soon as possible.
Lo más pronto posible y poder llegar al emigrante y solucionar su...
So that the immigrant comes and we solve their problems.
Para pagar después a los dos meses, liberarse uno de la carga pública del gobierno, pagar su alquiler, pagar su impuesto, pagar todo.
In about two months, the person is able to pay for their own rent so the government doesn't have to fulfill that responsibility. And this person that needs that place to give the person the place.
No es para continuar una vida ahí.
It's not about continuing your life in the shelter.
Porque hay personas que yo he visto en refugios...
Because there's people, I've seen people in shelters that have two or three places where they sleep. They occupy beds that other people need and that is something that you see a lot.
Me gustaría que chequaran todos los refugios.
So I would like you to check every shelter. If a person has already a reservation for a bed in one place and then another, well, nobody can be in two places at the same time.
Solo que yo observaba.
That's what I have observed.
Y como emigrante, vive por la selva, atraviesa seis países para llegar aquí.
And as an immigrant, I came through the jungle, I traversed six countries in order to get here.
Y te digo que...
I tell you.
Le doy gracias al gobierno, le doy gracias a Estados Unidos, a todas las personas que nos han ayudado.
I'm thankful to the government, I thank the United States of America and to all the people that has helped me, like the people that are here.
La señora que nos apoya aquí.
The lady that helped us and Mr. Powell.
Que ellos me estuvieron la mano fue cuando nosotros llegamos aquí.
They gave us their hand when we came here. That's the reason why we have been in several processes.
En los sitios que estaba, Randall, Waxton.
They know, they know the places I've been to, Randall's, Waxton, now I'm in Brooklyn.
220 aquí, la hermana Tucson.
I'm in 220 next to Madame Tucson and 42nd, 7th Avenue.
Entonces yo quisiera saber si en este caso que yo, por ejemplo, le ayude la vida a la persona.
So, would like to know if this case, that I saved the life of a person, I helped this person.
A que la compañía no tuviera ningún problema.
I helped the company not to have any problem and they offered me something and the promise was left in the air.
Porque las cosas por escrito se conservan.
Because when everything is written, things are preserved, but words are not.
Thank you for your testimony, we really appreciate. Thank you for being here with us and sharing your experience across navigating various shelter for asylum seekers and adding to the perspectives that we've heard throughout this hearing and many hearings that this council has hosted to better understand this administration, the mayor's plan. The council's role is oversight and we completely agree that the city needs to be doing better to ensure that every asylum seeker's needs are met. And particularly those that you've highlighted with the resident who nearly took their life and you were there to support them through that. But they need support services, they need the mental health services to have healthy coping mechanisms as they heal during their stay in our city. So there's much more to do and I appreciate that you're here and that you've been working with some of our advocates to ensure that the city takes care of asylum seekers.
Okay. I wanted to tell you one more thing.
En la observación que yo he hecho sobre las habitaciones.
An observation about the rooms.
Hay unas 70 luces.
There's about 70 lights. What are you doing with 70 lights in a room? There's 70 people sleeping there, it's too much light for such a place.
Porque eran lugares de oficina.
We can follow up about...
Office spaces, they were supposed to be office spaces and they keep the same lighting. So it has to be less lighting.
We can follow up about the specific shelter and somebody from my team will take down what specific shelter you're talking about so that we can inquire exactly what's happening with the lighting conditions.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan.
We have now heard from everyone who was sent up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone, like testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function zoom and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed and fullback committee staff, may be submitted to the record 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing into testimony@council.nyc.gov. Jer, and if we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you all so much, we have learned a lot and have many more questions for the administration. This council remains committed to protecting and strengthening our city's right to shelter decree and ensuring that as the city facilitates housing for asylum seekers that they do have minimum standards so that folks are not being required to walk out of a shelter to take a shower. Much more to come, I'm proud of the advocates we've heard from, the countless organizations that have testified and have shared their partnership with us and for all of the newcomers, from our young people to folks like Pedro for testifying this afternoon and sharing their experiences, everything from their migration journey to their treatment in New York City, but also the hope that some of our partners have been able to demonstrate. New York City will always remain a sanctuary city. So thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for this critical hearing. More to come from this council, thank you.